Begin tonight's planning board meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Of United States of America and to the Republic, we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, everybody for being here tonight. Before we get started, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Hi.
Nays? Let's also move on to approval of our minutes from the meeting on October seventh.
I have one question. In last minutes, a staff update. Michael was talking about all the town. Is exploring speed limits and various roads. And in the minutes here, I thought we started out talking about one ninety-one. Getting the feet on it lowered on it, but and all the others, it doesn't say that here, it doesn't mention one ninety-one, is that just a, or was I mistaken?
Uh, Haywood Road or one ninety-one was not one of the ones included in the initial speed limit. Uh, studies with DOT because there was additional conversations about how to do enforcement of the existing speed limit, I believe, with the sheriff.
Yeah, okay, I knew it was discussed, but I didn't know where we were at on it, anyway, in that case, I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second, thank you, Jen. All in favor of approving the minutes of our October seventh meeting? We can move on to hearing.
Great, thank you, everyone, um, few updates, uh, hitting on the Imagine Mills River Unified Development Ordinance, uh, saw a few of their out there, but uh, I was, uh, had a informational table for the public at the closing season, uh, Mills River Farm Market on October twenty-fifth. Uh, talked to a little over forty people, so good engagement from the community, and we got, uh, over twenty-five emails or people signed up for the email list, um, so was happy with that. Had a lot of general positive feedback, people supportive of the project, uh, same thing as the planning boards repeated here, you know, protecting the community character, protecting our sensitive environmental areas, obviously, after the Forge Ridge annexation, there were some, uh, uh, lingering feelings about that. Speaking of, uh, I know many of you may have watched the meeting, but just wanted to highlight for the public, um, that there was that uh, proposed annexation of the seventy-eight acre parcel on the backside of Forge Ridge, and that was denied by council, um, at their meeting, uh, in October, late October. Um, did want to highlight that, uh, we are in the midst of repainting and recarpeting Town Hall, um, so there will be some closures upcoming. Uh, the library, I believe, is scheduled to be painted and re-carpeted and will be closed to the public this Friday, the seventh through next Wednesday or Thursday. So just wanted to note that, um, in case there's any disruptions. Um, lastly, uh, just wanted to plug again, uh, the U D O project website. Um, we did leverage all the emailed public comment we got for the Forge Ridge annexation, we got, uh, I think sixty-eight emailed public comments. So actually, just today, I sent an email blast to all those people, again, to leverage that uh, input from them to basically get them engaged with the Imagine Mills River project. Um, but just, I'm gonna probably keep plugging that at every meeting and just want people to get the word out, including the board members here. Then again, the town, the town's doing its first ever comprehensive review of our zoning regulations and zoning map. And we need public input as part of that, um, to inform this process and have it be successful. Um, so if anyone hasn't, check out the information on www dot imagine millsriver dot com. And obviously, uh, we're always here to answer questions as well. Um, I did just, I added this at the last minute, but I did just want to touch briefly on the Riverside stump, dump, mulch fire. Um, it has gone down in, in recent days in terms of the amount of smoke, I believe I saw them turning some of the material today to try to get it to extinguish, but um, obviously, the town's well aware of that, from the planning side, we've already, uh, after we were notified about it, looked at all the permits, applicable permits that the town issued, which was a special use permit from twenty-fourteen. And after looking through all that, we found there were no violations, uh, we could, um, put forth on them. And then, uh, the main permit they operate under is with the State Department of Environmental Quality, um, because they qualify as a uh, mulch treatment and processing facility, um, and we've been talking to our state partners with that division as well, and have found that there were no violations of that permit also. Um, but I know there's a lot of concern about it, I know there's negative impacts and businesses have had to close. Um, and we just want to inform the public that that's something we've looked into, we actually have a call scheduled with, uh, the Department of Environmental Quality Staff at the third week of November to basically recap the event and see what, uh, you know, potential conditions or things the operator could do to prevent this in the future, so it is something we're looking into. Um, lastly, this is more for the planning board, we had some troubles with audio last time with certain people not being heard at the meeting, so I just wanted to give everyone a brief update on the mic etiquette, uh, to be heard, the mic needs to be pointed basically up at your chin. And I think, yeah, Ms. Marino, last time, we had a lot of trouble hearing you on the recording, Brad, you're probably good. Um, everyone else looks good, but just wanted to highlight that, because again, if we can't hear you, the members of the public can, so just want to make sure everyone can. And that concludes my updates, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, um, public comment tonight? We, we do have members of the public here, are you just here to listen? Great. Okay, um, then moving on to our board comments and updates. Any anything that the board wants to raise in advance of getting into the business items tonight? Good, uh, well then, let's, um, return to the discussion of the nuisance ordinance. Is this turning back to you or to Kevin?
Uh, we're gonna tag team this one, so I'll kind of introduce it, and then I'll have Kevin go through a presentation, similar to last time, the, the point of this is to basically guide discussion for the planning board. Um, and I'll just kind of reiterate this, since we have some new members as well. Staff's process, when we're considering, you know, new ordinances or changes to our existing ordinances, to always look at other example communities to compare against. Um, that was something we did with the traffic impact analysis ordinance, we did that with the outdoor lighting ordinance. Basically finding not only similar communities to Mills River, both in size and the land use, but also just in our region, and we always do compare slightly larger communities as well. Basically, to inform the planning board of the range of options that are out there, and then we rely on your input and your feedback to narrow that down. So that's really what we're looking, uh, from y'all is, there's gonna be a number of ordinances and ordinance language shown to you tonight. And really what we're looking for is for you to react that and give us feedback, what you think is right for the Mills River nuisance ordinance. So, um, there are some best practices we've seen, um, like anonymous complaints was something, uh, we didn't find that really existed anywhere, so there may be times we make recommendations where we say, you know, we would probably recommend against, uh, doing away with anonymous complaints, because no one else does that. But again, we're looking for your input on that, so if you disagree with us, um, feel free to say so. Uh, just like we do with town council, like we did with the hazard prevention ordinance, we're crafting this based on what we hear in these meetings, um, and so I just want to kind of frame that tonight. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
All these.
And just to throw Kevin off like I did last time, um, uh, again, we'll go through this and some of it is overview, um, but again, you know, this isn't formal, this is meant to be open discussion, so feel free to interrupt us, uh, if needed, and, you know, either of us will be able to jump in and answer your questions.
Test, test, everybody hear me? One moment. All right, good evening, board, how's everybody doing?
I'm good.
Good, good, glad to be here. All right, so, uh, tonight, we're gonna continue our discussion of the, um, going through the nuisance ordinance, and, uh, just to run off what Mike said, looking at case examples from different municipalities, um, within the various, uh, provisions we talked about last time and procedures. So just to recap from the last meeting, um, you know, there was a, uh, you know, we had some general direction on how y'all wanted us to proceed. Um, you know, we had a brief follow-up on, you know, we're gonna have a brief follow-up on anonymous complaints. Uh, and the oath of office and being sworn in as a code enforcement officer, as Mr. Burton, uh, I believe brought up last time. The main discussion tonight is gonna be to look at case examples, uh, for the definition of what is a nuisance. Outdoor storage, tall grass and vegetation, uh, and then we brought in three additional nuisance prohibitions for air quality. Uh, just a general blanket public nuisance prohibition and, um, a water quality prohibition, uh, specifically for discharge of pollutants into a, a body of water. We will have, at the end, have staff recommendations for outdoor storage, junk vehicles and, um, nuisance vehicles. And then, lastly, reserved for, you know, questions and discussion that we'll probably already have discussed, because we're gonna have a good conversation tonight, so, um. Next. Yeah, so summary of last meeting is, you know, we looked at the current nuisance ordinance, um, and we looked briefly at code enforcement procedures currently being conducted. You know, through our department. Uh, the general board direction, uh, from staff's understanding was to look at differences between residential and non-residential standards for outdoor storage. Uh, look at junk vehicle allowances, um, look into screening standards. Uh, for instance, you know, having, you know, if I can't see this outdoor storage, is it a violation if it's not a public health hazard? Uh, we looked at, uh, we wanted to look at tall grass and vegetation, uh, and some case examples, and then also you know, uh, courtesy warnings, you know, informal, uh, reaching out to, uh, the property owner that is potentially in violation of the, the, uh, one of the nuisance ordinance, reaching out informally, implementing those. Then I'm, you know, we're gonna briefly follow up on, uh, just complaint procedures and anonymity, um, one slide. And then oath of office for code enforcement officials, and then jump into the main discussion. So staff's findings within, um, you know, our research were that, uh, we found limited examples of any municipality or, or county that conducts code enforcement, uh, to prohibit anonymous complaints or code violations. One moment. So just from our understanding, uh, that it's, it's best practices to keep complaints uh, or allow complaints to be submitted anonymous and rely on good code to enforce, uh, so the better the code, so rely on staff with a good code, um, to en- to enforce the ordinance and keep anonymous complaints valid. Um, also to bring up, you know, potentially protecting the complainant, uh, from potential retaliation and potential disputes between private property owners. Again, good code and staff valid, validation through, uh, the investigation of, uh, you know, determine if the complaint is valid, of course.
Kevin, I have a question already, we'll have lots of questions tonight, sorry.
Of course.
Um, so when it comes to, say, my neighbor does not like me, and I'm out doing something, whatever, and those, um, anonymous complaints become retaliatory. Is there anything, since, since we're worried about the anonymous complainer, what happens when that gets turned around?
What do you mean turned around?
Uh, that the anonymous complaints are retaliatory against the complaint and, or the person that's
Making the complaint.
No, 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 otherwise.
They're complaining about.
Yeah, who they're complaining about. So say, say, um, oh, no, Jody doesn't like her neighbor and decides to go for the first complaint, there's no violations, right? Done, everybody's good.
Yep.
And, but that bitterness does not stop there, so Jody decides to do four more complaints that are anonymous. So what happens in those instances?
Staff would make a determination based off if the complaints are valid or not, and obviously, if, if they are continuous, um, you know, we're gonna see the trend in those and, you know, see if it's retaliatory or not.
Kevin, can I ask my question, I was gonna wait, but I think it actually is on the back of that. I, I'm a big fan of the anonymity, I, I, I don't think we should, but that's for you guys to protect that information, I, I was gonna assume or ask, you plan on collecting that so that you can track abuse? If you get one complaint retaliatory, there's either an issue or there isn't, if you get the second and the third, then you can start having the next part of the question, but how do you guys? Do you have the intention or already have an example of the municipality collecting the information to respond, to update, to track abuse, but, but keep it, you know, confidential in town, not, not share it with anybody outside of whoever's responding, you, Michael.
So that, that's, uh, where I'm gonna jump into public record laws.
Okay.
So municipalities, there are few examples or no examples I've found, um, in research, uh, that prohibits, um, complainants from making complaints not anonymous, basically, so, um, allowing that anonymity, uh, through the complaint process. Now, if the complainant wants to be updated through the code enforcement case or, you know, regularly, regularly be updated, you know, they may have to provide contact information, and that contact information is public record, uh, so if so just going into public record laws, so um, sorry, I'm getting so, from, from my research, um, the only, uh, the only
Exemption.
exemptions are for criminal investigations, you know, through active criminal investigations, not for code enforcement cases.
You say they're public. Right, when you say they're public record, they're not advertised, obviously.
They're not advertised.
If I could hold in and wanted, wanted to say who's, who's making that complaint against me four times in a row?
Yeah.
The name, the, the, okay, so that would have to be shared, is what you're saying.
So, so it'd be a FOIA request, um, basically, you would have to submit a written request to the town, uh, to obtain that information, and uh, the, the information on, say, the complaint form, if, you know, a name was provided, contact information, it would have to be, it, it's public record, so.
So if, uh, the need were to arise, we need to know who that anonymous person is, it can be obtained, right?
If they provide contact information, if they provide their name, but we're not, you know, if they wanna, if someone wants to submit a complaint, not provide any information, uh, it's our obligation to investigate that complaint.
Yeah, I understand that, and, and use your better judgment, but still, there's, there's a way. Somewhere down the line, if the need were to arise, you could find out who that person was, and
How are most complaints submitted?
So it's best practice to keep that open, so if someone wants to make a phone call, submit a paper complaint, uh, submit in our online permit, uh, or online portal, um, they, they can submit those ways, so basically, any submitting a complaint to our department, whether verbal, written, uh, so be, is the process, so.
Building on what Kevin said and going back to what Ms. Cilly said as well, there is nothing in the code that has any provision regarding abuse of the complaint system, I think that's where you were getting at. Um, if someone submits over a year fifteen complaints on their neighbor, we are obligated to investigate every one of those complaints and determine if it's valid or not. Now, if that becomes, um, an issue, you know, that's something I would make the town manager aware of, um, that possibly our department in this process is being abused. Um, but ultimately, that becomes a private matter between those two private citizens and their private dispute.
So just to clarify that one point, if the complainer wants to give you their contact information so that you follow up with them.
It's discoverable.
That's discoverable public information.
If it's completely anonymous.
There's nothing to discover.
You don't get to use caller ID to put it in your notes, like, if it's anonymous, you, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to Jim's point, I mean, if it's fifteen anonymous, and we know it's, and it feel, you feel like it's being abused, and you let the town manager know, I mean, what can they do anyway, I mean, what's the, what's the solution, I guess?
It would just be, you know, it, internal acknowledgement that, you know, the, the person complaining fifteen times may not be happy with town staff, because we've not acted on what they think is a complaint, but may not be a complaint as we've determined through the code. And so it'd be to make, you know, the manager aware of that potential issue.
Manager could always have some sort of, enact some sort of administrative policy or something that says, you know, once, you know, we, we, we feel like we're being, this, the process is being abused, have, have your town council, not this town council, but your legal council, send what's called a final letter of, of notification just saying, you know, this is complaint number seventeen. We've investigated them all, they're all unfounded, you know, when we, there's
There is a process.
There is a process, yeah, and there is no further action on the part of the town, sincerely, well, you know.
Well, but if you don't know who's doing that, you don't know
That's true.
But if they get the same complaint, and it was a pattern, they could have, they would have the authority to
Probably figure it out.
I'm like five neighbors, and you just don't like him. So.
Now, I don't know if this would be legal with nuisance ordinances, but obviously, you know, for like nine-one-one calls, abuse of that system has penalties attached. Um, again, that's not something we've researched, but again, if it's something the board wants us to look into, we'd be happy to.
I, I mean, I think at some point, I mean, we have a valid example of abuse, you know, of a survey, something as simple as that in the community, so I can see anonymous, and I agree, I mean, anonymity should remain, but somehow, the abuse part of it, I don't know how to address it, but I agree, we need to do something.
Well, I mean, there is the possibility of requiring anybody who files a complaint to, to get, give information, but it's, uh, but it's confidential. It doesn't go back to the person that's receiving.
There's no precedent, you're saying, for that, and
But we could create that, correct?
Someone submits a FOIA request for that information, it has to be provided.
Correct.
Correct.
But if you went through the motions to actually do that, then you should get the information.
Correct.
I mean, if, if that's
Yeah, but in that example, we require they give us contact.
Yeah.
I don't think that's
And there's, we, we found examples in the state of North Carolina.
Yeah.
I don't want to discourage people, I, I, it's a fine balance, I don't, I don't, I don't want people abusing anything, but I don't want them afraid make a phone call either.
Yeah.
Now, that's
And we may be talking about something that's minute, yeah.
I don't want to split hairs, but, I mean, one fifty-two point ninety-nine C states that a violation of this ordinance is class three misdemeanor pursuant to GS fourteen dash four. As I recall, that's only like a fifty-dollar fine, there's no potential exposure to any incarceration or anything like that, but it's still a criminal offense. So is the, the nexus there that you could, and this is a question for an attorney, you know, if you are investigating something that potentially could be processed as a criminal violation, is, is there, um, is there an exemption? And I think that's what I so difficultly tried to articulate last time, that I couldn't get my, my mouth to work right. I mean, and that's, that's a question for, for Ms. Alexander or your legal counsel, and I don't, and that may be splitting hairs, they may say, you know, it's, you know, if you're not have a, um, any exposure to any, any kind of sentence other than a, other than a penalty, then, then, then there's not enough juice there to, to call it a criminal matter, but it's a question worth asking.
So, uh, just to go through some examples of requests, so Winston-Salem, they have a, I found that they have, um, you know, to file a FOIA request, it'll be reviewed and sent to the city's attorney's office for determination on what information is required to be Determination on what information is required to be released by law. So. There can be a standard process for that. But let's, uh, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. I found, uh, staff found limited information on non-law enforcement officers, uh, being sworn in. Didn't find any legal requirements for code officials, uh, to be sworn in that aren't law enforcement officers. For instance, town planners acting as in that capacity. You know, some questions that remain at large are, you know, we had limited findings, you know, probably gonna need to. Consult the town attorney on seeing what additional legal protections are for being sworn in and and what's best practice.
I think it would be prudent just to ask that question and if 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 they, I mean. I'm I'm I related you information that that's.
Yes, sir.
Decades old, you know, and 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 so that was, that was, that was a gold standard. In the day, you know, if you're, if you're out doing, you're enforcing code. Then, you know, it's it's best to have the 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 shield of the liability that that you are sworn officer doing that.
For planners or?
Uh, just anybody that's this designated, a designee is a code enforcement officer, some of that. But again, that's, that could be, that may be antiquated now. One sixty D has changed so much stuff that I'm not up to speed on. I just thought I'd, you know, I thought it'd be prudent to bring it up and it's worth a question. To your, to your town count, to your attorney, um, and she may say horse feathers. Don't need it, or she may say, that's not a bad idea. I don't know. Or something in between, but it's worth checking out.
You brought up a great point last, the last meeting, so that's why we, uh, put it on the presentation. You know, there's additional research to be done, finding the benefit of being sworn in. Uh, so right as of now in the towns, uh, you know, in chapter one fifty-two for nuisances, the. The planning and zoning department is the responsible party for enforcing the nuisance ordinance. Should the title code enforcement officer be the authorized delegate versus that general? Planning and zoning department, uh, title. And if we go to the next slide. That's what the, um, that's what the statement is, is in the in the nuisance ordinance. So. The says the planning and zoning department, um, acting by and through its authorized delegate to determine whether or not a nuisance exists. You know, the department shall act by and through complaints only. So they're the responsible party. Should that authorized delegate be? Uh, a code, you know, defined as a code enforcement officer or?
I've always seen it done that way. Planning director is the. Again, I might be giving you adequate information, but planning director. Is in charge of everything and he is, he is, he or his designee. And then you have code enforcement officer, nuisance abatement officer, or whatever it is you want to call them. You know, in in some jurisdictions, then you might have a floodplain administrator, or you might have, you know, another. Regulatory role. But the planning director always is the, is the one that's. It's on you. It, you know, they're always put the, yeah, it's always the hooks on the planning director, but his designee. And it's usually, i- in my experience, it's come with, with come with, with a title.
So let me ask this question. A town twice our size, what is their planning and zoning department look like? How is it broken down? Like, how many as actual designations do they have? Like, do they have these, can you give an example?
I'd say a lot more than ours.
I'm asking because like if if. When we grow, you know, we might have to delegate, you know, somebody to do flood or, you know, like waterways or, you know, like. Certain aspects of of residential and commercial, you know, like really kind of break it down. So, um, it would be kind of nice to see how like a city maybe or town twice our size. Like at most twice our size.
Separating out the responsibilities as the, as the capacity.
We're only going to get bigger, uh, roughly, and, um, I don't want to pigeonhole. You know, just one certain per person and then have to go back and change it. But if they kind of keep it under like, you know, a specific heading, that would be useful. You know, to see how that's done.
That individual can wear a lot of different hats, too. It could be, you know, you could have a. I mean, as an example of Mills River, you could have a watershed water supply protection officer. Have a special hazard area. I'm still trying to keep the F out of that. And that sounds really bad, but that the F stands for flood and I hope that doesn't was not taken out of context. Uh, code enforcement officer, you could have, you know. Anything that you're enforcing, you can have all those titles.
And that's what I was gonna say as well is basically. I have taken oaths of office as the zoning administrator, as the subdivision administrator, the watershed administrator. Um, and so, you know, I, my designee is basically the staff member who would assist me with that. So right now it's Kevin. Uh, but the idea is if we have additional staff, it would be up to the department head to designate those roles. And correct, I wouldn't want to pigeonhole or tie one staff member to that specific role through an ordinance.
Correct. That's what, that's my concern. I would rather leave it pretty broad.
Before we move on, I just wanted to go back, um, to get consensus on one item. I I saw some general head nods, but is there a majority consensus from this board that we are okay drafting this ordinance to include anonymous complaints?
The thought is that we don't have an option, right?
You can. You would just be one of the few in the state.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But that, that's one thing I want to do is that, you know, as we're talking through this and hitting these topics, I I want that feedback. So as we get into crafting the ordinance, we know there's some, a majority support from the board for those items.
So Mike, if I, correct me if this isn't right, but if. The alternative would be we're not going to allow, or we're going to require them to give us contact and then they're going to hang up on us.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
That's how I see the alternative.
But because this and the hazard prevention ordinance, our ordinances are. They're not part of a zoning or anything like that. We can, we can modify these things as we find.
It's not land use, we're not.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I, if we wanna, I don't, we wanna vote on there or whatever, but I mean, yeah.
No votes necessary really, as long as, you know, if there's enough head nods around the table.
Sure, yeah, I would allow anonymous, sure.
Um, and again, we don't need to to figure out the nitty gritty details of every one of these, but as long as we have general consensus to move forward with topics like that. For each topic area and item, that would help us a lot as we move into drafting. And then when we move into drafting and present that that stuff to you like anonymous complaints, we can work through those specific details.
All right, um, we're just, just gonna touch on, you know, standard enforcement procedures and courtesy warnings. Uh, so just a broad overview of. You know, direction from the board was to implement written courtesy warnings, uh, before issuing a notice of violation. And then the process would be, you know, courtesy warning, NOV. Civil citations and then going into. Nuisance abatement. One example Brevard has in their code, um, is that you. That that the city is required to notify the owner occupant of the violation, uh, before issuing a formal notice of violation. I I found that just as one example. Um, there's, there's probably a lot more similar out there, so. Now, gonna jump into. Yeah, it's sorry for all the small lettering, it's a lot.
That's all right.
So I I really like actually how this procedure is worked or awarded. Uh, the only thing that I would change at the end. My perspective is the owner and occupant. Because rentals, um, you may have to deal with the landlord or the owner of the property as well, and as. Retired landlord, I would like to know if there's a citation on.
And our, our best practice is to always notify the property owner. And and that information is more readily available than what's provided for the occupant, because you go to Henderson County GIS. The mailing address is provided there, so that's. Pretty quick, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. And and there's gonna be a more in-depth presentation, uh, in the future on enforcement procedures and best practices, so. This is just a broad overview of the general direction, uh, having written courtesy warnings implemented into our enforcement procedures. So hang tight.
Thanks.
All right, so we're gonna go into the meat and potatoes now. Defining a nuisance, you know, what is a nuisance? Just to. I should have had this other slide before, but, uh, we we picked five different municipalities, oh, four and one, uh, county. We picked, uh, two, two for the case examples. Uh, the one was Forest City, North Carolina, Archer Lodge, North Carolina, Marion, Brevard. Uh, Henderson County. And, uh, tho- those were the five, so the. We looked at Archer Lodge, uh, because it is a small, uh, rural farming community out east. Uh, so wanted to see what similar, uh, you know, nuisance. Code they would have comparison, you know, just with the community. Uh, looked at Forest City and Marion because, uh, they had a lot of things in their code that. Responded to board, the board's direction, you know, on residential versus non-residential, uh, standards for outdoor storage, screening standards. You know, standards for temporary construction sites. But basically, that that's why that municipality was, uh, chosen as a case, case example. And then Henderson County because copy and paste pretty much from, you know, them to to Mills River. And then also Brevard because it's local, uh, right, you know, right down the road type cleat. So. Yep, Forest City, um, doesn't explicitly state, uh, what is defined as a nuisance. But it states that any of the prohibitions, when you look at the code, um, below where it lists the prohibitions that affect public health and safety. So public health and safety, basically. Uh, Archer Lodge.
So it doesn't define it beyond what we see here?
Yeah, no, there, uh, Forest City just says any, any of these following lists below.
So there's a, there's a list below that.
There's a list below. Yeah, this is just what was generally related to what nuisance is.
Okay, I thought it was that open, okay.
Archer Lodge, uh, touches again on public health and safety and then adds emphasis on happiness, emotional stability. Decreased property values and rights of others to enjoy the full use of their property without adverse impacts. Marion, same, same, pretty much very, you know, same topics with, uh. Archer Lodge. Uh, Brevard, not, again, this one was not explicitly defined, but revolves around public health and safety. Henderson County. Same as, uh, you know, Mills River, public health and safety, and then also includes language about transmission of diseases, rodents, vermin, insects. Uh, those types of things.
Now, that's what we adopted roughly, right, was Henderson County?
And that's what we have in our code, correct, yeah.
Can you go back to Archer Lodge?
Of course.
Happiness is what you're looking for, is like.
Absolutely not what I'm looking for, uh.
Yeah, I'll, I just, I just seize them, them as.
Yeah, because, you know, um, you know, Bradford pears make some of us happy and and not others, right? So, uh, that, in all seriousness, so we we debated this a little bit last time, the, uh, decreased property values. Do we have any? Any understanding how they may have enforced that, because that was one of the things that Brad and I disagreed on, but.
So the prohibitions are what are what enforce. This is just the general definition of what a nuisance is. So this is where it starts. And each municipality has those, you know, different standards for what, how they define a nuisance. So basically. This is what, you know, is a nuisance, and then these are the specific prohibitions below typically, that's how it follows.
So if there was, so i- if there was a list of things below this. Then somebody who wanted to file a complaint thinking that it decreased their property value would have to tie that complaint to one of the prohibitions below that.
It depends on how you want to tackle it, public health and safety, um, you know. Does someone having, if I make a complaint about a property that has five or six junk vehicles. Do I think decreasing my property values, um, is a nuisance? And that's a question we're asking.
Yeah, and that's where Brad Bennett. But Brad was that very valid point. The valid point was, how do you enforce that? I mean, how do you? How do you determine that? I think that's, I think that's important, but I I, you know, happiness. But property value. You know, there, there might, I would, I would think that we may see somebody who. Thinks that because they have five junk cars on their property, it decreases, that the property next door decreases their value. And I think. Personally, I think that that can be. You know, a valid complaint. So my only thought was, yeah, of of all those other things, I think we should, we should tackle that a little bit more somehow.
Tackle what more?
The, um.
Decreases property.
Decreasing property values.
So my issue with this comes at the very, with with all that is at the the last end part, because it's all subjective. It is very subjective. Am I happy?
That was my point.
How do you, how do you, how do you?
It's my comfort and my emotional stability, not, A, is not y'all's responsibility. And two, not something that I'm willing to usually like.
My thoughts also, it's all a matter of interpretation. What makes me happy? Might not, you might look at it as not happy. The five cars sitting there. I may not think to bother me, but other people have an idea that it is a security problem. It's all a matter of interpretation, I think.
I think a way to frame this is, you know, the, there are the nuisance prohibitions, which as, as Mr. Webb's referred to as the list. Junk vehicles, uh, unmaintained swimming pool that's a breeding ground for mosquitoes, et cetera. And so we will go through those, but staff uses this definition to determine if that complaint is valid. So if we, if we have a definition of a nuisance that just says public health and safety. If there was a public health and safety hazard to those prohibitions. That we determine, we will most likely find it to be a violation. If the definition is broader and encompasses, you know, subjective items. Um, it it would broaden staff's potential interpretation of finding a nuisance valid. Because we're talking about impacts on neighbors, not transmission of diseases. Or, uh, you know, a, a child climbing into a junk car that has broken glass in it and getting injured.
Well, both, both of those can be done by a neighbor as well, but. Yeah, and then let me be crystal clear, I was talking about the happiness and all that. I know you're saying it's subjective, but. The value of your property is not subjective. There's a written value there somehow, but how do you determine that is the point.
Yeah, I mean.
But I, but if you had to start to interrupt. If you had, not the whole definition there, but I'm focused on the one, the decreased property values. And you had, I'm just clarifying what you said, Mike, and you have a list of what is defined as a nuisance, junk cars and on and on and on. Then somebody could. You could tie one of those button, um, uh, bullet points. Back to decreased property value and.
As we're getting into talking about appearance and the impacts of. The public visibility of nuisances.
So as we're going through these, you're basically looking for feedback for us.
Correct.
We want to narrow ours down to.
And the general.
Find our details a little later. Right now, you want this list to be something, you're looking for us to narrow the list.
Yes, sir.
The health and safety, I'm gonna guess everyone here would say yes to.
Of course.
Finding health and safety, is it the person's health and safety, or is it the neighbors, that the larger community, the the health and safety? The rest of these are gonna get.
Yeah, I agree with you. Slap down one more times.
Well, like, if I have a wood burning stove. So say my neighbor's been through a house fire and gets triggered by wood smoke. Now, I don't know that. Maybe I'm not that close, but that would interfere with their emotional stability and their happiness, and that's a jet, subjective.
I don't think, I think it's a little more subjective than the value of your property, but it's just, so.
Well, it depends on which, um, accessory you get, because when I sold.
If we could get the county or Mills River to say if there are five junk cars next door, they'll lower your tax burden.
That amortization list does not exist.
I'll give up. I'll stop, I'll, I'll move on.
I see where you're coming from. I really do.
Yeah.
Really, really.
Attack of that later, I just think, I, I do think public health and safety is paramount, and that's where we should, that should be the foundation of this, that'd be my opinion, so. Just thought, I just saw that in you, just thought it brings up.
Now, uh, just to, I had an extra definition for uh, a nuisance. So, Mr. Burton, you brought up Richard uh, Duckert uh, from the School of Government. Now, he defines a public nuisance as a condition or activity involved. Involving real property that amounts to unreasonable interference with the health, safety, morals, or comfort of the community. You know, very clear cut, not super long, what are your thoughts as?
Subjective.
Subjective as, well, okay.
Yes, the mo- the, the last part of that, the morals and the comfort, that is two subjective terms. We need to be very um, I don't know, detailed when it comes to like complaints. Um, that actually, I really think that protects not only the complainer. But the person that's being complained on, back to abuses and whatnot, because I could, I, give me five minutes and I could probably.
Yeah, and I agree with you, if you, if you have those things in there, not only is it subj- it's not, it is subjective, but the. The amount of complaints we were likely receive, based on the opinion, uh, the subjective opinion would be massive, so yeah.
Now, what about what we currently have, you know, Henderson County is basically, we're copying and pasting over. This is what. The uh, current definition of a nuisance is uh, in Henderson County.
I like it, and I also like um, Forest Cities as well.
Forest City? I won't, sorry, sir.
Alright, she read it two seconds.
You read from left to right, man.
This one vehicles, um. Like it's, it's overly specific.
Okay.
And doesn't give, like to Michael's point earlier. A little bit more of the flexibility, when you tie it to something that's immediate. Direct, if left unheated due to the exist, you know, it, it feels. Like, you know, something.
Would you just remove the word immediate?
Well, I, I was preferring, well, I agree that the, you know. Uh, emotional stability and. Uh, morals. Those words are too subjective, but, you know, keeping it gen- you know, general public health and safety. Kind of a more broader approach on health and, and safety, and rather than being so specific, because. What follows is where you get the specifics, uh, you know, the very, the very specific, um.
Bullet point.
Bullet point list, we'll, we'll have the, the specifics, which would probably include something like. A threat that, of transmitting disease through insects or animals, but that seems to. It's so narrowly tailored, it may not allow some of the other types of nuisances that we've been talking.
The general health issues.
Yeah.
In public safety, right?
Public health and safety. Uh, which I think some of the other examples had, um. Versus, versus this one, which just seems.
Yeah, to, to me, when we have these health, and these are all, you know. Infections, animals, rats, all, is all health, it's all safety, uh, we haven't talked about screening yet. You know, there's things you can do, require if you're gonna have some junk cars out there. The category of eyesore nuisance is a huge, huge bucket. And the one that I think is going to be the one that we get the pushback on. I personally am gonna push back on it. I don't want junk cars everywhere, but I also, part of being rural is not having this be too expansive.
Cause we're not in it, the town is not an HOA.
I, I agree, you want that, we have lots of those. Uh huh, but the health and hazard, the health and safety part, I keep, I'm gonna keep coming back to strongly, I, I, I think maybe, Kevin, maybe we have an eyesore bucket. And maybe it gets big, and it gets narrowed down, but maybe some of.
That would still be subjective as well.
It's all gonna be subjective, that's my point, I don't want the subjective stuff, we keep coming back to it, Con, I don't want it to eat up all of our time. Worry more about the objective.
Yeah, I agree.
For now, the, would, would a consensus be to focus mainly on public health and safety versus uh, those. Those other types of happiness?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that's a good start for a text amendment.
For me.
Yes, sir.
And that's why we're, we present this range of options to you, because again, we want to see how you react and the guidance we get from different examples on different ranges of the spectrum.
Look, I'm, I'm a bully, when it comes to the eyesore thing, I'll try to push you guys hard, but don't give in, have the argument, cause the eyesore one is really important to some people. Do I want it across from me? No, I don't want a pink house next to me either, I've been in real estate twenty-one years, that pink house hurts my value. Do I think the town should come tell them to paint their house a different color? Nope.
Yeah, but.
So where, where does that conversation go? It just goes forever.
Eyesore doesn't cause disease, so I mean, it's subjective.
Right, right, so I really wanna.
Like happiness, you know.
General paragraph, or it's into the list, so this is just the broad definition, let's take it to the bullet point.
The prohibitions is totally.
Now, one thing our, it's, um, one thing our nuisance ordinance does, right, is that have a definition section. Which is pretty unique, I, I think, having that right there in the, the chapter, you know, so. Alright.
Totally agree with that, if we're gonna have this, it needs to have clarity for you guys. The last thing I want is you guys think of this later on, you know, I, I don't want that at all for them. I don't, I like the acronym though, CEO. They can give you that title, the cord- the, the, the code enforcement officer, so whoever the CEO is over there, I want them to have some clarity.
Alright.
I mean, you know, I know we wade through these things, and sometimes we get stuck on details, but you know, if, if we're asked to do something, I think it's important to wade through it. I mean, it's just, there's no, there's no quick and easy way sometimes, so.
Some, some of these will cross over, some of these. I'm not a big fan of, of, of governing, of, of us policing the curtilage, I believe you, you know, with. I don't believe we're gonna even define curtilage in this, I don't know, maybe we are, I'm not a big fan of that. But if it's let go too far, you have rats and mice, and you have, you have a ton of other things, so. You know, that's where it's gonna get iffy for me, like, how, how close to somebody's foundation are we getting in this conversation?
Six feet.
Say it again?
Three to six feet.
Curtilage, is that, is that what your definition of curtilage is?
Well, no, like, uh, that, I looked up pest control.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mainly keep right, um, my, or just vermin and snakes, uh, from any building, it's three to six feet.
I got news, I cut my lawn religiously, you guys can see it, every time I cut my hayfield, guess what I have in my house? They all come, okay, so it's not, it's, it's, it's not as black and white as we want it to be. I don't wanna get the HOA people driving around in golf carts all over town, shaking fingers.
Alright, is everybody ready to go to outdoor storage next? Okay. Okay, so um, just going into the first case example for Forest City, uh, for outdoor storage. You're gonna see a bunch of prohibitions that all relate uh, to our significant outdoor storage prohibition currently in our code. Um, staff tried to best relate these to what we currently have. And uh, you know, for, for example, in Forest City. Um, unusable building materials, no longer used, suitable for building and construction. Was, was mentioned. The uh, white goods, you know, refrigerators, appliances, such being stored outside. Uh, hazardous materials, animal and vegetable matter. And, and then it also, the city also has an exemption. Uh, that I thought was interesting, and I, I can't read that from here, so.
Which, which one are you pointing to?
Uh, so for the, um, so there are exemptions for uh, non-residential uses. Uh, with ad- adequate screening uh, from adjoining properties in public streets. Uh, there is mention of. It's A, uh, I'm sorry, it's so small. Oh, thank you. Or, yeah, so, yeah, A, so basically, um, you know, storage of. Of junk, basically related to the business, uh, or the, the, the non-residential use. With adequate screening would be permitted, as long as it's not a, a public health hazard. Which then it goes in, uh, down, down, down one more, um. Is adequate screening, it defines later, hate to keep going down that, but. Yeah, basically, not being visible from a public street, um, or abutting properties. So. For residential properties, there is, I thought this was interesting how, um, they allow up to a hundred square feet. So there's a quantitative aspect uh, for outdoor storage. Uh, as long as it's screened from abutting properties in public streets, and only located in the rear yard, so out of sight, out of mind. Uh, hundred square feet or less of outdoor storage, stored in open space, and we, we would need to define open space, of course. But. And then C.
Now, it does say, just on B, it does say specifically, if I'm reading that correctly, a fence. Doesn't give other options for screening, like, you know, evergreens or.
Yeah, so.
Behind buildings or woven galvanized chain link fence.
Are we talking about things that are used for the business, or, or not?
It says junk. A byproduct, we, in this example, it's not defining.
He talks about. So, I do have a question on the issue.
Yeah.
Why for, when it is talking about the open storage of any discarded ice block, refrigerator stove, washer dryer, and other white goods? So, um, I don't know, it's been a lot minutes since I've talked to some fishermen. Um, but there is a lot of people who. Grow their own bait. Um, and refrigerators or all freezers or stuff like that, uh, pair of warming and stuff, um, or it's not.
It does say discarded.
Well, the thing is, is like, you know. That's also kind of subjective, if I'm rolling by and I see, you know, an unplugged freezer outside somebody's house. Unless I know that it's discarded, you know, what am I complaining about? So then just be somebody complaining. Um, now, if it is like overturned, and like the refrigerator doors wide open, and you can see the shells ripped out, and it's just piled up. Okay, now that's what I consider, you know, discarded. But um, that can, that can be confused with some. Uh, uh, actual uses in permaculture. Um, or like worms and castings and fishermen and stuff like that.
Our definition of not, not used or not used, or some expanded definition.
If you go back to that quantity aspect for residential properties, where it says a hundred square feet or more, um. You know, basically, I would say, okay, do you need five or ten of those, or you just got one, you know? One really a nuisance versus, you know, having five, fifteen, twenty. You know, that, that, I think that's where the.
Correct, yeah. I think, um, uh, weeding that down. Either by footage or used for. Wouldn't help a little bit.
Quantity, okay. Any thoughts on quantity, an area for outdoor storage being openly, you know, open in a.
The big concern is things that can retain water, these are, you know, mosquito ponds and drowning hazards for children.
As long as it does, and there's, goes on to say, as long as it doesn't, as it doesn't um, cause a, a additional nuisance.
Right.
Uh, with, you know, saying puddling water, um, environment for insects and mosquitoes, so. That would be out the door, but let's say someone wants to just store, you know, junk, pallets, scrap metal. Yeah.
So, um, I used to work in a, a juice plant. Um, I do think um, commercial and probably for all, there should be a height limit on pallet height. Because after roughly twelve to thirteen feet, it becomes, starts to become unstable. Um, so we should definitely maybe look into adding that apart, whether, I know that we're gonna be talking about.
Look more into that. See.
Can I change gears just a, a smidge? Um, as, as far as outdoor storage, um, I understand we're in the nuisance section right now, and. You're looking at, at. Materials that are no longer in use or being stored for whatever reason. Does, does, does the town, so when I think of outdoor storage, I also think of the, the proliferation of. Um, a place to put the, 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 the peat moss bags and the. Um, mowers and all the stuff and that are, that take up, that, that, that are sold in retail establishments, but yet. Take up parking lot spaces, take up. Yeah, this frontage in front of buildings and things like that. And maybe I'm just, I, I, I'm wondering, when, when we talk about outdoor storage, would it not be? Yeah, your zoning ordinance probably has something to do with that, I mean. I'm, I'm, I'm asking, you, you, you permit a, you permit a, a grocery store, a twenty-five thousand square foot grocery store, it's gotta have. X amount of parking places, correct?
Correct.
Because the, because the square footage, well, they take up, you know, forty-two parking places with, they, they put a garden center in. That's outdoor storage, um, you know, they have a, a special event, something like that. And I guess where I'm going with all this, going down this rabbit hole is, when we talk about outdoor storage in the context of nuisance. Is, nuisance is, sh- should we maybe out, define it a little bit more explicitly? Like outdoor storage of. I don't know where I'm going with this, do you, do you see what I'm trying to say?
I think the word discarded, I don't wanna pick on any business, but yeah, there's a massive parking lot, and there's a grocery store and some other businesses. And they use the parking lot for some of their stuff, but that's, that's not discarded, right? That's just part of the business, I wouldn't, I wouldn't count that, obviously, but, just like, if you have a tire shop, I mean, you're gonna, there may be a tire sitting out there or two or more. You know, do we wanna screen that? I mean, there's probably not a lot of, probably not a lot of profit.
I said it didn't make any sense, but it did to me at the moment, but.
No, we, we have a very, one single section in the zoning code that is a very, uh. Simple provision regarding outdoor storage for commercial, half of the front yards.
Half of the front yard.
Okay.
Um, now, if it's a shopping center, and it's taking up parking spaces and causing a safety hazard due to traffic circulation, that's another issue.
Which could be a nuisance, yeah, thank you.
But, but the current nuisance ordinance we have now does not address any of that, as we've seen, does not really differentiate. Um, between residential and commercial for outdoor storage, except for this one allowance in the zoning code.
Thank you.
Now, also, it goes on to mention, um, you know, the exemptions for those outdoor storages, as mentioned, uh, cannot become a fire hazard. Uh, hold stagnant water, um, you know, foster an environment for rodents and insects. Or cause overgrown weeds and vegetation, so. It's something to think about, you know, when I was doing my research, this was. Pretty. You know, more than what we have, you know, instead of all that kitchen sink definition or prohibition we have in our code. But, let's go, let's go forward.
Can, can I ask you a question, wait, before you move on from that, so the, um, it's just more for my, myself here. The, the, the fire department inspects every business once a year, right? I can't, they do.
Yeah.
They do, so all businesses in the entire county get inspected once a year by the fire department. Alright, my question would be, ingress and egress, does that fall to the fire department in their annual inspection? I know it does for the building, you're shaking your head for the parking lot, so, in, in other words, I, I don't know that we want to. You know, we're not gonna get into environmental health conversations for how a, a septic system is installed in here, because that's done by environmental health. You know, are we, do we need to be redundant on fire inspections?
I mean, if it's a fire hazard, you know, having that as a public nuisance in our ordinance gives us more backing to enforce that, you know, more, you know. As, you know, the enforcement officials in the town at the local level, we have more eyes on the community when we receive complaints. You know, having those additional standards, i- it, it's a good thing, in my, my opinion.
Okay.
You know, yeah.
So it's having the redundancy there for us, uh, you, you. Fire inspections happen once a year, they could, you know, remedy something and put it right back after they get their, their stamp for the year. In theory.
A- and this is, you know, again, this would be complaint driven.
Right.
As, as well, so.
Right, okay. We're not actively inspecting, you, the CEO isn't going out inspecting parking lots, so. Inspecting parking lots, so.
All right, all right. So for Marion. It, you know, continues on outdoor storage of building materials and rubbish. It, it, they just list multiple types of outdoor storage. And let me.
So is this a prohibition or an allowance?
So these are a bunch of prohibitions we found. In their nuisance ordinance for, for Marion. So it goes on, you know. Collection place for lumber, bricks, blocks, nails, building materials. Solid waste. Rotten, damaged or dilapidated sheds, outbuildings. Old, worn out, broken, discarded machinery, car parts. Open place for combustible items being stored outside.
Anyone that's ever been to Marion knows this is not being enforced.
No, no, it's not.
Sharp objects, you know, broken, someone wants to store a bunch of, you know, items that are rusty, jagged. Even has something to go on to say that the use of portable screening devices. Such as tarps, fabrics, plastic. To cover or hide these referenced. Outdoor storage is prohibited. I just thought that was interesting. I don't. Yeah.
I think I thought, like, I don't, I don't. Find the prohibitions, but the wording is very wordy. And on top of that, it is, it sounds like it's looking for trouble. It's like it's dialed down so much. And so detailed in each one of these lines, like, really, you, you could just say building materials instead of lumber, bricks, blocks and nails. Like, who's looking for nails? I mean, that.
It, I, I think it's just trying to. Guide, guide, give examples.
For building around public health, some of these don't, to me, seem to apply, so.
What about the 30 day limit on the first bullet? You know, one thing we talked about is giving staff additional direction. So when we're out in the field, we can quantify a nuisance easier. We talked about previously having a square footage requirement. Do we want a time requirement? You know, should someone be allowed to have some items in their yard for a period of a couple of weeks? But if it. Is long-term outdoor storage, does that then become a nuisance? And then again, with, with the highlighted portion at the bottom, you know, we're trying to highlight these specific items for discussion. Should, I like the word portable screening devices, but. If it's covered with a tarp, is that okay? And that's what we need feedback on.
So, so I did. Went down another rabbit hole today and went into our, the Harris County Waste Management, like that schedule. For. You know, like paints and stuff like that. So they only do that like four times a year, right? So we really need to like, make sure that we capture. Capture at least one of those, like make sure that we make the link. Of. You know, you've got to have it cleaned up by to encapsulate one of that, because they really don't have another option to take, like say, say they. They painted. And now they have all these paint cans, but they can't take them until like four months down the road when our next scheduled. So. So I think this should be as broad as we can make it within that scheduling. And I think it's every three or four months. So maybe somewhere around.
Just for those hazardous items, correct?
But only, only pertinent. You have to be able to affect that minimum opportunity.
How's the rest of the board feel about that?
About the hazardous or about? The number of days here on the top?
Any and all.
Okay. I mean, I, I do think that. There, I don't know, 30 days is too quick, but I do, yeah, I do think that. I think you've talked about this before, growing seasons and things like that, but I do think that there should be. I should, there should be a limitation on that. I mean, if. You know. Yes, there should be. I don't know what that limitation.
Part sentence is, and caused by current construction progress. Takes six to nine months to build a house. We got 30 day.
Is that what we're talking about though? Are we talking about somebody who? You know, has Billy, you know.
Well, there needs to be multiple definitions. So your residential, non-residential, then there has to be an allowance for construction and I know that's.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, there has to be, but if I have lumber. You know, logs made into lumber and I. Just storing it outside somewhere and I don't use it for two years, there has to be some limit on that, right?
I, I agree. Construction, so this one says, and caused by current construction.
And that's just verbiage from their ordinance.
Right, yeah. One without that time.
It's, it should be, it should be or, so maybe it's 90 days or if you have an ongoing. Building permit. For as long as.
No, no contractors leaving the same piece of wood on the ground for 90 days. But, but they're going to use the same staging area over and over as they're progressing through it, so.
Right, so that's why it's an or. So as long as you have the building permit, like the, the time limit is irrelevant.
Yeah, you, you guys may not like this, but I feel like if there's an open permit, we shouldn't be putting a time on there at all.
Well, that's, I'm saying or, so.
No, 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 but, but. I just said a minute ago, it takes six to nine months to build a house, but that's not how permitting works, the permit.
Yeah, there's a slide for construction sites later on.
Perfect, because this one had the and there, so I wanted to make sure. So if, if. We'll get to the construction side of it in a second, so if we kind of omit that for the sake of this conversation, an existing structure that's not under construction. What are the, the time limits? I still think 30 days is too, too soon.
Let's don't, let's don't.
90 seems reasonable. Yeah.
There's some other examples in any other, other townships or municipalities you use? Is this the only one with the timeframe on?
Well, let's don't forget the events of about a year ago. Where this people's got stuff everywhere. You know.
The town waived to put moratoriums in, you know, for when that happened.
Well, that's, that's good. But.
We're still not referencing the temporary, long-term use of temporary, you know, art.
Put it on the books. And the right person pings on it, then you have an obligation. So do you want to? You know, I think a time limit is appropriate, but. You know, you need to. Consider, you know, natural disasters and, and, and. Things that might occur that. You know, there might not be another option for folks.
An exclusion for natural disasters.
Something like that, I think would be, I mean, we need to learn from, from this event and, and there's. There's still stuff streaming everywhere, as we all know.
I sat in those meetings with town council. They, they took it so seriously and they, you know. Waived enforcement of a lot of stuff at that time and they were, they were all over it. I, I hope we don't ever outgrow that sense of small community. I don't. Know that we should be spending a ton of time on it, but. To your point, redundancy isn't going to hurt anything.
Correct, yeah, certain. All right, next municipality is Archer Lodge. Just a couple of new. Goes into, talks about combustible items being stored outside such as mattresses, boxes. Paper, automobile tires, just goes on. For a list, you know, junk, discarded machinery, car parts, tires, rims, furniture, stoves, refrigerators, appliances. Solid waste and animal and vegetable matter. That's just what one municipality does. Any questions on that? One or. Pretty. Similar to the others. So also, one thing I found interesting was. For open storage of. Furniture, refrigerators, stoves, glass. Building materials. That the use of carports, open porches, decks. Basically. Outdoor storage would be applicable to, to open areas like a deck, you know, being stored on a deck under an open carport. If it's exposed to. A, a public street or to abutting properties.
Again, just language in Archer Lodges, but do we want to regulate? I stored on, in carports or on decks that are visible.
Inside cars.
Sorry.
Inside junk cars, that's, that's another.
Cars, but not a visible area outside of closed structure.
And is that, again, if we're building this to begin with around health. And had. Hazard, so that's, that should be. So, you know, a. Something that's in one, something in this list that's sitting on somebody's porch. Or open deck, if it's not a health hazard, why do we want to regulate it?
Also, I don't think someone storing moving boxes on their porch or. Maybe if it's trash or solid waste, it's a different story. In that, heading on how long.
That would be something hazardous, health related, so.
Exactly.
And you had a, a previous slide where they talked about putrescibles. One of my favorite words.
Putrescible.
Putrescibles, which are just rotting stuff, rotting organic matter. You know, you start storing that stuff on a porch, then we, we better be regulating that.
That's a health issue.
That's an health issue, right.
All right.
But yeah, I, I agree with Jenny.
Is with all of this verbiage and slides and everything else, is if it moves away from. The health standard, the health issues that we're building into this as the foundation of this. Shouldn't be that detailed at the moment.
So the, the next bullet point. Also goes into, you know, conditions like having outdoor storage of lumber, bricks, blocks, construction materials. Temporary in nature without the. The duration of the 30 days as listed in the prior. Case example. For, you know, construction projects, does that? Sound something that y'all? Would like?
Say that again.
Sorry. Basically, if you have a construction project and you're storing stuff outside. It's not a, it's not a nuisance.
Not if it's an ongoing.
A lay down area.
Yep. Okay.
It's a lay down area. I mean, you know, it's, it's obviously a lay down area. We don't need to be enforcing that.
Qualifier there as long as it's in process.
As long as it's in process, right.
Okay. Revard, I mean, it, it's, it's pretty, you know, ties into all the other ones. Nothing really jumped out in terms of. On my, on my side, so. Revard.
The only, just going back. One of Brad's favorite words, but the one thing that has kind of, there's been a theme that I would just. Want to maybe counter is the concept of. Rotten food waste or putrescible matter, to the extent someone is composting. I, I think that has to be differentiated. In some way.
Yeah, but you normally. Compost, you, you have, you build an enclosure. And take your eggs and your coffee grounds and all your stuff and. Put it in, in that one specific spot. I think what the reference that they're trying to make here is when. You're done with the, the trash bags full and you just throw it on the porch. And then you throw the next one on the porch and it's got. Putrescibles, and I like saying that.
I, I would just say like this particular definition. Well, it's not specifying a location or whether or not it's contained and certainly some composting can be. Open air.
Open air turning is the most, it's the original composting. No walls, no slots, no container, no.
Right there.
Just talking about specifics, like this one specifically, I wouldn't want to.
I would want to see an exclusion for composting. I compost heavily.
General. Doesn't seem to, it seems like. A comp, an open air compost would be. Considered a violation if, if this were the language.
Understood.
So glad, piles of glad bags on the porch is not composting is what we're.
Right.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you're.
Process, internal process is the same, but.
All right. And then Henderson County, pretty much we're a copy and paste. Of this nuisance prohibition. It goes on to even say. Usement park devices. I think it even says toys, bicycles. All-terrain vehicles, anything that can, it, it goes back to the. Disease carrying insects, rodents, vermin, etc.
If it's tied to that, but the word that's most operable there, you could list 15,000 things is the word significantly. Who defines that, so.
But not limited to, right, in the first sentence.
But again, I would have to tie it back to, you know, health hazard.
Next, we're going to jump into. Junk, abandoned and nuisance motor vehicles. So. First one, so basically with these five case examples, we looked at. The different types of. Junk vehicles per se, abandoned junk. And then also. The new term nuisance vehicles, and we'll talk about that. So. Generally, most of these municipalities all fall to state statute. You know, there's a. A state statute for what an abandoned vehicle is. What's in this case, I'm just going to read it once for. Forest City and then to say it's repetitive down the next one says, any, any vehicle left on a public street or highway in violation. Of a law or ordinance prohibiting parking or. Being left on a public street or highway for longer than seven days. Or is left on private property for more than two hours without consent of that property owner. That's textbook definition from general statute. So abandoned.
So it allows the owner of the property to accumulate junk cars.
Remove.
Remove them.
This is just the abandoned.
Oh, okay.
This is abandoned. So we're, we have a junk vehicle. Prohibition for our, our code. But we're looking at also. Abandoned and nuisance motor vehicles, and we're going to dive into that. They're all sort of tied in together, not the nuisance one, but junk and abandoned with, with the general statutes.
What we found was when we looked at the example ordinances from the other communities, they had, a lot of them addressed all three.
All three.
Our ordinance only talks about junked, and so since we found a, a lot of that language, we wanted to present it and get feedback on it.
Abandoned junk and nuisance?
Correct, they're all different.
I love. The, the last one, it left a private property without consent. I don't have the right to remove it in two hours. There is some folk that are not from here that like to travel. Deeper in the mill river and just find them a spot to stop and. Camp. On some like private property. That, that right there would have been very useful for me when I was helping.
And, yeah. And where that comes into play with, you know. Code enforcement. I've received phone calls about disabled vehicles. And we're asked to, you know, figure out. A way to get a tag, so we call the highway patrol and we'll take care of it for. You know, the person that calls in. That's really, it, it just all ties in with junk vehicles and it's good to have, basically. Junk vehicles, standard definition with the state statute. Partially dismantled or wrecked. Cannot be self-propelled or moved in the manner in which it is originally intended to move. Or is more than five years old and appears to be worth less than $100. Yep. Also, it goes on, if, if the vehicle has an expired tag or no. No tag at all or plate. It mentions that in the statutes as well. So that's. The broad general definition. Some, here's, in Forest City, there is an exception or exceptions. Nothing in the article shall apply to any vehicle located in a bona fide automobile graveyard, graveyard or junkyard as defined by. A very old junkyard control act from 1967.
We have sufficient on junkyards here, right?
We have standards for junk, for. Vehicle graveyards, not necessarily junkyards, but vehicle graveyards and what is defined as a vehicle graveyard. And I'm, I'm going to go into that, so. Doesn't apply to vehicles and enclosed buildings or what is on the premise of a business enterprise being operated in a lawful place and manner. If the vehicle is necessary to that operation. What about that? And then also what is an appropriate storage place or depository maintained in a lawful place and manner as permitted by the town. Any thoughts, questions on that?
I think it's going to be a tough conversation to have, but in general, that second and third bullet point for Forest City are just. Ridiculous.
In what way?
Oh, sorry, I was.
Go back to the, the first two, sorry, go back to where you just were. Not the one you were reading, but the one I was reading. Cannot be self-propelled or moved in a manner which it was originally, I, I can't have a car out in my driveway I'm working on. Over months or years. It can't be propelled. It's more than five years old and appears to be worth less than $100. It can't be propelled, it's more than five years old and appears to be worth less than one hundred dollars, I mean. Again. This is gonna be a tough one for me, I'm, I'm not looking to get way down in the weeds on broken down cars, I'm more worried about the number they have, I don't want them having thirty. I don't know what the number is, unless it's a business, they don't need to. I, that, that conversation I want to have, what, what's the right number, but those, those second and third bullet points.
If there's one car. In a yard and the weeds around it are taller than the vehicle, it probably. Doesn't, isn't something that somebody's restoring.
You added the grass to that quality, you qualified it with tall grass.
I got you, I know that it.
So, was, then, to the, the next slide, at least, catching up with you, I'm not usually the slowest reader in the room. No, um. We have a definition for graveyard.
Correct, cap, uses an accessory, um, use.
And then, of course, it's, uh, you know. Part of the business.
If it's essential and related to the business.
I'm not looking to get, that's part of their business, I mean.
Right.
I'm not looking to touch that at all.
No.
Maybe a little bit.
Now, for residential, um.
For residential, I think there's.
There was.
A number.
I felt like there was consensus last time to have a, uh, one, you know, maybe one vehicle allowance, uh, as long as it's properly screened. Maybe located in the rear yard. Uh, is there consensus on having an allowance for residential properties to have at least one junk vehicle?
I, that's where. Which is why I was asking, how you define that, right, so, yeah, that, that, to your point, that was probably narrow because it doesn't take into consideration somebody restoring a vehicle, but.
I mean, is there a qualifier you put on there, if, if not, you know, actively worked on?
Yeah, restoring whatever.
Being worked on.
Yeah.
At least it wouldn't have four feet of grass.
Yeah.
What the answer is.
So, I, 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 why would there, why would one junk vehicle be, well, one junk vehicle is less of a health hazard than. Five, obviously, but it's still a health hazard if it's not being worked on.
Well, if it's a junk vehicle, we're not even into if it's a health hazard, is it, per that state definition, inoperable? Um, not being able to move the way it's originally intended to move and so forth.
So that was the state, that was all state definition.
Yeah, but they weren't ands, they were ors. And that's really different, when you have three bullet points and you have an or, and the third one is older than five years and appears to be worth less than a hundred bucks. Man, maybe I've got three Corvaires and I, I need to make one good Corvair, it's gonna take me.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, yeah, and I, I, I just, I know people who have a pass.
That's when you get your vehicle restoration permit from us.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for, where does it go?
Well, that's up to this board, if we want to amend it or modify it, but again, the, these, these are just examples. But yes, the junk, the, the junk vehicle is a state statutory law. And that language is in almost every municipal ordinance across the state.
So, so we need to give them, and you reminded me, obviously, all of us, or at least me, a, about the, um, uh, what was the permit you just said, the retro?
Vehicle restoration.
The resto, so the resto permit.
Yeah, so would you, when you add that language to the, the, the statute that says. You know, the exception would be if they have that permit, okay, yeah, that would, that would, that would make.
Give, give them a, a way to do this, that isn't just, yeah, I trust me, I'm working on it.
So I'm up to three on the number on the property.
Yeah, I'm more than one, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be quiet here, cause.
Without a permit?
No.
To refer, no, I'm, I'm making a statement and I'm asking a question.
I want to put a limit on the, the, the.
Without a restoration permit?
Just a true junk car.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think one is, I think one is one too many, I mean, so.
That's the other thing is, is if one that's not screened is too many, what if. The requirement is you're allowed to have X amount, but they have to be screened with a portable screening device, a tarp.
It's a junk vehicle, why do you want to screen it, I mean. If you're working on it and you have a permit, it, to me, it doesn't matter whether it's screened or tarp or whatever, you have that permit on something you're working on, but if they're. If you don't have that permit, screen it, tarping it, tarping it could create more of a hazard and. You know, a health hazard than not tarping it, I mean, so, I, I just think it has to do with whether it's something that they're going to restore or not, and if not. And you don't have a permit for it, one is one too many, that's mine.
I just wanted you to remind you all that. You know, the vehicle restoration permit. Is a, it's a code enforcement tool, so we get a complaint about someone having junk vehicles. The only time, you know, that is really gonna come into play in code enforcement is through the complaint process, so. I'll just say, we don't have people coming in applying for vehicle restoration permits unless they're in an active code enforcement case. Is that?
And then is there any criteria to, to qualify? That they're actually restoring the vehicle, probably.
There's a second, yes.
Okay, well, good.
In our code, copy and paste from Henderson County.
Yeah.
So they have, they have six months, um. To, to get it operable. Basically, and then they have, if they aren't there yet. Um, they have to provide proof of making progress towards that to get up to, uh, two six month extensions by staff.
Does a restoration permit contemplate a parts, to Brian's, to Brian's point?
You have a parts vehicle?
You got a parts vehicle and that's, that, that contemplates that as well?
Correct, yeah, so when they apply, they have to have, they have the vehicle they're restoring, they have a parts vehicle. And we're gonna look to see if the vehicles are compatible, of course, you know, if someone wants to restore a truck and they have a parts vehicle for a, a little car or whatever. You know, we're, we're checking that, so. Uh, we don't want it to be a loophole for people to. To have as many junk vehicles on their property through the permitting process.
Correct. Then prove me wrong, I mean, why would, why would one junk vehicle? Not be inappropriate, I mean, if it's junked and they're not restoring and it's just stored on their property.
We're gonna go into.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, this, there's a whole new, you know, a whole new type of, uh, vehicle, nuisance vehicle, so it, it's defined as any vehicle. Uh, on public or private property that is determined, uh, to be a, basically a health and safety hazard, uh, with the following. Um, you know, statements below, uh, breeding ground for mosquitoes or other insects. Um, has heavy growth of weeds, noxious vegetation, exceeding twelve inches in height. Uh, think of someone mowing around their junk vehicle in their yard, if they have.
Or not.
Oh, yeah. Uh. Collection of pools of water, you know, stagnant water, uh. Um, you know. Combustive, you know, if it's, you know, jagged objects, um, you know, if it's. Uh, storing gasoline or other combustible or flammable items, uh, storing solid waste. Uh, let's say the, the windows are broken in and there's jagged objects all over it, that basically, uh. Not necess, not a junk, it, it's a junk vehicle, but also now it's a. Certain public health and safety hazard with those elements in play.
Right.
Hopefully it doesn't have to fit on a junk forward by, by these definitions.
Right.
Now, there's.
Right.
Public news. Right. Right, right.
So the nuisance definition is not general statute, this.
This is, this is a common best practice with, uh, I, I believe three or, three of the case examples.
Yeah. So the last bullet point there. Is really the.
Yeah, that would, um, yeah, that's very broad.
Yeah, but that keeps it from. I mean, if, if it is, as, as it says there, a health and safety hazard, then none of the other, other qualifier definitions matter. No, Matt. I'm not going at it.
Ordinance include the nuisance vehicle in the definition, or would it be better for us? To have a subsection on nuisance vehicle with definitions underneath that are going to be. Really impactful things that we use for the nuisance.
This would all be contained in the nuisance ordinance, and we would have a section on nuisance vehicles. And I would think the definition for all of those items would be at the top of the nuisance ordinance.
And going on to our next presentation on procedures, there are specific procedures you must follow by state law. Uh, to remove vehicles from private property.
If we get to that.
If we get to. Alright, so Archer Lodge. Basically, same for abandoned vehicles. Um, same for junked vehicles from that state statute. They also have nuisance vehicles in their ordinance. Marion. Same for abandoned vehicles, they, I think. Oh, they added something here, uh, if, if an abandoned vehicle is left on property owned by the town longer than twenty-four hours. Uh, it's considered abandoned vehicle. Um, just something additional. Same, uh, for junked vehicles.
I don't know if you'd want to include, I mean, somebody, you know, somebody meets somebody at Ingles and catches a ride and they're gone for four days, I mean. Cars in the English parking lot.
On public property.
Uh, yeah.
It's like someone gives a, something, you know, park motors.
Yeah, like the car's gone.
They have nuisance vehicles as well. Uh. There's an exception here. Uh, basically, uh, one of the exceptions is, is any vehicle not visible from public roadway or adjoining property and located in an enclosed building. Or what is in an appropriate enclosed building place, uh, storage place. Uh, in a lawful manner, so think of, uh. Junk vehicle graveyard or something of that nature. Um.
Going back to restoring a vehicle.
Yep.
Cause I'm very sympathetic to what Brian was saying, I mean, you might have somebody who's. Saving a, a, a vehicle for, you know, a child or grandson to restore at some point in the future, is there a deadline or a time limit on that?
On, on the expiration, yes, so they get six months and then they can get up to two more six month extensions. Uh, as long as they make progress towards that restoration.
It's just. At their word, progress, you're not inspecting anything unless there's a nuisance complaint, right?
Exactly, and that's, that's where the thing.
It's all complaint driven, you're not citing visits to update a.
We're not, we can't, yeah, we're complaint driven strictly.
Okay.
Um, and it's. It, it's a benefit to, to potential violators to, to help them get their property into compliance, basically, you know.
The honor that, with the complaint, uh, driven initiative. Um, so how does that fall in with the, um, cause this is both in, not only Marion, but, uh.
Or Cindy.
Archer Lodge, yes.
Um, is the, any other vehicle specifically declared a health and safety hazard and public nuisance by city council? If we're making complaints to the code enforcement, then, you know, why, why would we want that exception for town council?
That's for y'all to discuss and tell us.
Why would y'all want?
These are just examples, so, we, we've seen a couple of times that, basically, the town can declare it itself. Do we want that in our nuisance ordinance? Or do we want specific prohibitions? In this case, for a nuisance or junk vehicle.
Word your question again.
Okay, so why, why would we need to put anything in for town council for them to declare a. Health and safety hazard, public nuisance on a vehicle? Why is that not being followed through with the chain of complaints, cause that's where we are, right, complaint driven. Uh, violations and nuisances, so why, why do you skip the department and just go to town council?
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, that's.
I don't think that we should have that in ours, I think it should continue on its status quo of, of being fielded by the people who. Not only enforce it, but go out and look at it. And then if they've got, if they've got issues, they can bring it to the town council or to the mayor or to, uh, Matt. To. Deal with it that way.
It's also, I mean, it augments the process too, I mean, if you. You know, you've gone through all the steps. And you're still not getting anywhere. You know, you could present, present it to town council and they can. Fortify it by making that declaration. Does that make any sense? And, and, and now you've, you, you, if, if you go to litigation. You've done a courtesy letter, you, you, you've been to, you've called him, you've done a courtesy letter, you've sent him a notice of violation. Sent him another notice of violation, all certified mail, all posted the way they're supposed to be done. Still not getting anywhere, you could turn to town council and say, okay, we've not, these are all the things that we've done. Would you be wanted to clear this public nuisance? And if they do, and if, should they do that? Then, if you go to litigation, your honor, these are the steps we've made, we've tried all these things, town. The, the governing body of the city. Or town, or a city too, okay, the governing. Do we? Really, okay.
See, it's the different requirements, or were you gonna call it a specific municipality?
I wasn't aware of that, I thought a, a village, a hamlet, a city, a municipality were all the same thing, but I, I could be wrong. I've been wrong before, but where I'm going with all that is, if you had all that information. And made, and then made that formal declaration, and if you, then you, you've, if you had to take it to court, you've got that much, you've got that much ammunition under your belt.
To, to that point, so if it's already complaint driven, went to the proper, uh, department. And they've already declared it a violation and offered it a citation, what's the use of town council doing the same thing? Is this just difficult work for everybody, because it goes to a baitment? Correct, if it is not taken care of after a certain number of.
What was the third step? Written notice, knows a violation, a written warning.
Citation, uh, civil citation, so basically fines, um, and then it would go to abatement.
Civil citation.
Yeah.
And you will find that. My experience has been, before town council goes to. To a paid for abatement on, on the expense of the town, they're gonna want to have some more additional information. And that's where this might become in handy.
Also, you know, smaller municipalities, maybe they don't even have. You know, the staffing, you know, think maybe if Rosman, North Carolina has a nuisance ordinance, and they have a town administrator. Bringing it to their, their council, you know, maybe that's why it's put in play, you know. But, um. Yes, we. Yep.
And sound bigger.
Paul Gras. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go to Paul Gras and.
Can we stand card for just a minute?
Course.
Sorry, I know, my voice is moved. Just going back and forth on these definitions, so if something becomes a nuisance vehicle, and let's say we have a definition that's just health and safety center. We decide it's a, it's a nuisance vehicle, it doesn't matter if it's the other ones, if we have a different definition, though, that's, it's, the health and safety is overridden, it's nuisance.
Correct.
Okay, so a junk car could come there, so I'm trying to think.
Or prevent it from being allowed to be, you know, let's say you have a, an exception. To store a junk vehicle with screening standards on residential properties, except if it becomes a nuisance. With these standards.
So, yeah, that's my question, so I'm working backwards and, and hearing. Again, if I've read these, sorry, I'm slow on this, uh, I can't have it in a carport because it can be seen. I can't have it under a tarp, cause it can be seen. I think there should be an allowance to have those, unless it crosses over to a nuisance, which is health and safety, right? I, I'm sorry, I, if someone wants a car under a tarp in their driveway, on the side of their yard, or under a carport where it's not getting excessive directly.
But for what purpose, I mean, of course. Doesn't matter, you're saying?
That matters.
Uh, it doesn't matter. Um. You know, if, if it's its final destination out in the middle of the hayfield. Okay. Maybe that's not good, but I just struggle with this getting into. Correct me if that was wrong, if it's under a carport and to, by definition, a junk car. It can be seen from the road, cause there's no screen. But it's under a carport. So I've got a tarp on it under a carport, it's got both, but it still is gonna be classified as a junk car that we're not gonna allow, I'm just, I'm not. I'm not getting.
Took my neighbor four years' work on his barber.
Okay, how long?
Half, half the time it was out in the field. And then the other half of the time it was in a carport.
Right, if it's just literally abandoned, well, not by the legal definition, but if it's its final destination, a hundred feet away from the nearest structure on the home over there. And it's clearly just, that's it. I think that's one conversation, but if, if, if it can be seen from an, an, you know, adjacent property, or it can be seen that it's. Tarp. You know, tarp car, uh.
I think we've heard a few opinions on that, I'm gonna pick on Ms. Marino, Mr. Foster and Mr. Kimsey, how do you feel about screening of junked vehicles? Because again, as we move to drafting the ordinance, I've heard a couple of different opinions, and we'd just like some direction on that. Is, is having it on, on, you know, it covered by a tarp okay? How many should be allowed for each property?
Residential. Neighborhood and company. Even in a carport. Junky looking.
One no, they working on it.
But this is outside of, I'm sorry, I'll be quiet. But you're asking outside of somebody who has a permit, right? You're just talking about an abandoned.
General nuisances. You know, we can define a junk motor vehicle as a statutory definition, but. Y'all, that's why we're asking these questions. Mills River defines what's prohibited. We don't have to say every junk motor vehicle is prohibited. We could say two are prohibited. We could say it's only prohibited if it's visible and doesn't have a tarp on it. And so that's what I'm digging for is what do we want Mills River to prohibit? It doesn't have to be all junk vehicles, but we need to quantify. What the actual prohibition is. Number per property. Is it visible? Does it have to be visible from a road? And adjacent properties or just from a road? Again, can it, if it's covered by a tarp, is that okay? Those kinds of things.
I'm guilty of that. Again. We say a visible from a road. Now. Most neighborhoods. In Mills River, or a lot of them are gated communities. We're talking about a public road.
That's for you to tell us how to draft it. Do we want it to be a public road or do we want it to just be any? Residential driveway or street?
Well, I think it, 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 any, because. Take a gated community. They, they built a home or bought a home in a gated community for a reason. And there ought to be some protection. By that one bad individual. Destroying the neighborhood. Well, again, homeowners. May supersede anything what we do anyway.
I'm going to vote public roads. Everything behind a gate in North Carolina is a private road, just so you know. So those are all private roads. You and I aren't going to see them. The people behind that gate can make their own rules. They're okay.
That's what I'm saying. I think they have, probably already have, have.
I don't care if they do or not. They chose to live behind a gate. They can make their own rules back there. I don't care if they stack cars on their roof. Behind the gates.
That's where we are.
You want to be that kind of neighborhood, make your own rule. You want to be out here on a public road? That's where we should be focusing our conversation.
And, and, and even though it's the opposite and I'm not supposed to be picking right now, I do lean into what. But Brian is saying, if somebody has a vehicle in their driveway. Not clearly, you know, discarded forever and they tarped it and there's a reason for that and it's something that they want. Yeah, I think we should have a number. And allow that because we don't know the real purpose, right? That's not what we're trying to. Maybe it's a vehicle that their parents own. They want to sit in it every once in a while, whatever. I mean, yeah, you don't want to, we don't want to get that detailed. I'll go back the other way. So.
What about a quantity? This is for residential.
Yeah, I mean, for residential.
You're talking about something that's tarred under a carport, something that, I mean, obviously if it's inside of a shop, there is no conversation.
Right.
Right?
Correct. So there is, they can have a hundred of those. Well, if it's screened fully, then we really care how many they, they have. If it's fully screened, do I really want to get into?
Okay.
How do I even know? They had me over for a barbecue and then I called them in?
I agree that a screened junked vehicle should be permitted. I don't know what the number is. I don't know that we need to figure out the number tonight, but. I'm definitely would be in favor in. More than one, less than five. Something. Yeah. We're talking about public road. Junk vehicles.
Unscreened, they're visible.
When we're talking about junked and then nuisance is a different category.
But they cross that line, then that's a totally different. They can't have the nuisance ones that are health and safety.
Would be outright.
I'm going to throw a, a four. I'm going to throw four. Three, four.
We will draft something with a range and come back for.
There you go.
Feedback.
There you go.
But just in the interest of time, let's move to tall grass and vegetation and we'll probably need to click through these slides somewhat quickly, but really. Here we're just looking for, is this something y'all think we should include in a draft nuisance ordinance? Is a tall grass and vegetation prohibition right for Mills River? And we have a couple of examples with height limits and also other standards that Kevin will touch on briefly.
Yep. So, you know, each of these case examples had different height standards for. Vegetation, high tall grass, you know, like a tall grass ordinance, basically. Forest city. You know, anything in excess of 15 inches. That, you know, could be a fire hazard. Attract rodents and vermin, insects. And then also. In there. My eyes are. There's an exemption for cultivated and managed vegetation. You know, such as. Prom predominantly forest areas, areas of, of natural vegetation. So. That's just one example. Archer Lodge. Bull benches is their max height. Anything over that would be considered a nuisance and. Excludes trees, ornament shrubs. Plants, natural vegetation on undeveloped property. And then goes into say, you know, gardens, vegetable, vegetable gardens, et cetera, would be. Exempt from that. An exception, some exceptions also would be, of course. No impact to bona fide farms. It wouldn't regulate that. Any property that's not. And, you know. This is not subject to town subdivision regulations. Undeveloped sections of subdivisions such as natural areas. Or, you know, even, you know, just wooded forested areas, basically. Marion didn't have any exceptions and they were really restrictive, six inches.
Wow, that's my grass every two weeks.
Yeah, especially the tall.
I mean, I don't know, in, in, in a rural area, I mean, I don't know if we would include. Anything in here of that, so.
Seems like it should only, if, if it were, if it's adopted at all, it would really only apply to like a manicured lawn. Because, yeah, in a rural context. What's a weed and what's not a weed and six inches and 12 inches seems. Outside the, the norm and, and starts to. I, I, I'm just trying to figure out what, what exactly is trying to be targeted by these? As a. What is a public, you know, health hazard to having grass that's.
Well, animals. I mean, you have beyond the eyesore part of it, which I do not want to touch at all. And you're going to, I'm going to be really hard pressed to touch it even for health and. Safety on grass height, but. Rodents during the drying season, when the growing season's over, you have fire hazard. Is, is the argument. So I don't, you know, we're not getting into curdage, but curdage is basically median. It's not, in fact, um. You have no findings were found regarding a distance standard from buildings for enforcement. You didn't find that in any municipality. So they didn't define curdage. So the, the area immediately around a building, a structure, commercial, any kind. The only argument I think I'm going to be open to at all is that one, the fire hazard after the growing system sort of, and the standing grass is drying.
But if that's part of like a bona fide farm or pasture, then.
Those, those are all exempt anyway. I'm talking about the person's house that doesn't mow their yard that creates a fire hazard. Do we even want to touch that? And that's. So if, if I'm safety and, and our health and safety, what else is there? The, the pests. You know, I mean, and abandoned buildings completely different. It's rained in the roofs, you know, fallen in, caved in. That may be, but something we get to. I don't know if that's. Right, right.
No, we don't have any, we don't have any, any prohibitions regarding minimum housing standards or structures.
Are you drive around? We definitely don't. So, but.
But so I, just for tall grass. So I've already heard a few no's. And so that, that would be all the feedback we need. So no, no, Mr. Foster. All grass and vegetation. Are you in favor of it in any way?
No.
Okay. All right, that's a majority. Thank you.
All right, Michael's moving on. Michael's moving on.
Let me ask.
Go ahead.
Of course, we know agriculture was not included in any of this. What effect? Of all the things we're discussing tonight. How is this going to fit in with the U D O?
Doesn't.
It doesn't.
Well.
They're not addressing this. That was one of the questions I asked last.
I mean, I thought they're going to come up with a whole.
Not that.
New stuff. That's why, that's why staff, you know, presented the council in March of this year about this because we knew. Well, actually I didn't find out until this summer. That it was not going to be part of the unified development ordinance project because that's just land use zoning and development regulations. This again, police powers, public health and safety, different kind of rule. Now, this one came up because a, as I said in my staff update, we've been getting a lot of calls about smoke in town. And guess what? There is not a prohibition. Or any public health, safety reference in our code regarding. Air quality issues. And that is why we're bringing this to you tonight because we have been getting citizens saying, why aren't you finding the riverside stump dump? Why aren't you taking action? Well, because it's not in our code. And so we just wanted to bring that for y'all's consideration to length.
So I'm a no on this. Because we do have wood burning fires or folks that do that. Lawn fires would be included with that. It is unfortunate that the, the. Stump dump ends up on fire once a year. But sometimes we have wildfires that create that amount of nuisance as well. I burned a wood at my house. That, that could be a neighbor of this calling and then like, I don't want to smell the wood smoke from the fire.
I think this one could have a time element to it though. I mean.
Right.
A continuous. Excessive amount of air. Quality nuisance is different than, you know, you burning, you know, and it could, it could specific, specifically exclude wood stoves and.
Outdoor.
Bonfires and, and, and to burn things, you need to have a burn permit anyways. Right, exactly. Right. So, so, you know, all of that would not be a nuisance.
Why? Ever I was. Couple restrictions, but. But the town itself could supersede that and say, no, you can't, you know, burn your leaves anymore, or you can't do, you know, a bonfire or whatnot. And that's what I don't want.
Right. No, and I don't, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I, I, I think though that doesn't exclude. Having some sort of nuisance language around air quality.
I think your timeframe makes sense. I mean, I, I burn brush, you know, once a year and that's going to take a couple of hours for the brush pile to burn out. So.
Jenny, how would you feel if that, the stump? Place wasn't that? What if it burned year round like that? What if that's what the service had provided? Can you, have you walked into Ingalls lately? You can hardly breathe inside the store right now.
Yeah.
Well, I went and got food there before it came.
It smelled of smoke. I. Yeah. And, and. Yeah, we have exclusions for private residences. We have, you know, let's have exclusion for all that stuff.
There be a, would there be a definition when it goes back to health and safety of the time, time that that smoke is present, right? So.
Falling back to.
I could, because I feel pretty comfortable that if I was an employee of Ingalls, I would be worried about my health because of the time. That's elapsed. And so to your point, if we put, put a time. Time frame around it.
Right. You continually penalize a business that by. Whatever. It catches fire and they can't put it out because of the type of substance that they're working with. Should we continue to penalize them? Because it has to burn itself out.
I'm not even talking about that. I'm, I'm talking about the normal course of business. Not exceptions like that. For me, is this, do we have any more measurable death counts? Examples to use or these are only two?
And I, I get it. I mean, if you own a, if you own a business and, and surrounded by trees and it catches on fire and it.
That's different. I'm sorry, that's.
I agree. No, I agree. That's what I'm saying. I agree, but.
Wildfires is different.
But to Brian's point earlier, if, if there's no regulations around it and they decide the best way to get rid of some of these materials is having a three hundred and sixty-five, seven day a year. You know, you know, smoke, burning fire with smoke, you know, then that's probably excessive.
To me, these kind of conversations. Sorry?
I don't know.
I suppose said more. I question when is that falling solid waste?
Don't we as a town, and we're not town council right here, but don't we owe it to the surgery center, to the grocery stores, to the, to everybody in this entire community? A place where they, you know, the surgery center couldn't even. No, 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 no. But that's not the stump, the stump, that's not their normal course of business though, is it? So I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the next guy who buys the 500 year floodplain for a hundred acres, doesn't have a tree near it and sees an opportunity to burn stumps year round. Do you want that next to all the, these other things we have?
But that would be, that would, I, I still think that would fall into solid.
If we have an air quality nuisance prohibition, doesn't matter what it falls under, correct?
If I may, so. Burning is regulated to the burn permits. But Department of, the State Department of Environmental Quality is the one that regulates commercial burning operations.
Very different.
You are only allowed to burn. Four times a year on a property with waste or vegetative debris that comes from outside of that property. And we are receiving complaints about sites in Mills River that don't follow those rules. And as we all know, the state environmental regulators are underfunded and understaffed. And so we are having trouble responding to our citizens' complaints. Because there's nothing in our local ordinance to enforce anything. The state law also says. You can't burn anything except for vegetative debris. Trash, any other type of solid waste is never allowed to be burned. If you do burn more than four times a year, you need a special permit from the state. You actually have to have an air curtain burner, which is what they were proposing out here on our mulch facility with the county. Basically, you're burning so hot.
So hot.
The smoke emitted is reduced. But I want to highlight that.
So we could regulate it and. You know, not for, the stump dumps, normal business is totally, there, there has to be exceptions in the acts of God. Personal, anything allowed under these burn permits of residential, private wood, you know, housing, all that stuff. Put the exemptions in there. But don't leave the door open for someone to come in and do a business like that on purpose.
That's making all these decisions. Why don't we just clarify what is allowed?
Well, the state allows a lot of things already. You know, through the private.
So what is that important? You know, like businesses that. Or what, whatever you want to.
Yeah, I don't know the definition. That's why I'm asking for, do we have something measurable that some other town uses?
I think all we're looking for, because we didn't have time to put that in, I guess this was kind of an after the fact thing based on complaints. Is, is this something the planning board is interested in seeing in the nuisance?
Yeah, I'm a vote for more information.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right.
Check it off the list, Mike.
What about a prohibition for discharge of pollutants into a body of water?
We don't have that.
So outside of, so there, there are provisions of, you know, in the watershed ordinance.
Right.
Inside the watershed, but nothing outside of the watershed.
Oh, okay.
So. You know. We're backing.
Protecting the waters is a no brainer. The watershed, put it off.
We have it in the watershed now, right?
Correct.
Okay. Which it all goes eventually into the water anyway.
We're pulling our drinking water from. Watershed.
Think if someone's dumping oil in a creek or something and we get a complaint about it, but it takes, you know. Environmental health or not environmental health, but the state level to a long time to come out there. Well, we get a complaint. We're on it, you know. Very, you know, a lot quicker than what the state.
Yeah, then include it. Yeah.
Definitely would like to see more.
And I do not want ag. To see ag excluded from this because that would also be creating fertilizer pesticides. And animal waste being put in the stream as well. I think that should be restricted.
It might take an act of God, but I'm waiting not to have an ag exempt on water pollution.
Okay. All right. What about just a blanket nuisance prohibition for any condition detrimental to. Uh, what about just a blanket nuisance prohibition for any condition detrimental to public health and safety?
Building error.
I think we covered that one previously.
Okay, yeah, all right. So uh, we're gonna go to staff recommendations and best practices. Um. You know, after, you know, going through all these case examples and research, uh, we think it's. Uh. Best practice and we recommend to. Add definitions for open space, outdoor storage, temporary conditions for. Construction sites per se, uh combustible item, solid waste. Uh. Done, sorry. Uh. Sorry, I lost. Yeah, so add more definitions for different types of outdoor storage. Um. Remove significant outdoor storage from the nuisance prohibition because significant is very too subjective. Um. Add additional prohibitions by type of outdoor storage. So for example. Added uh prohibition specifically for white goods, toxic materials. Uh, solid waste, unusable building materials, basically have specific prohibitions. Uh, for different types of outdoor storage. Uh, and then add dimensional standards for residential outdoor storage. So you know that hundred. Square feet. Um. You know. Have some form of dimensional standard uh to determine whether it's significant enough. Um, and then also making sure it's non-hazardous, so. Um, for commercial outdoor storage, uh. You know. I'll. Recommend to allow outdoor storage uh for commercial uses in, in accordance with these standards, you know, basically having. Uh, screening standards, making sure that. You know, the outdoor storage, if it's related to the business, is properly screened. Um, you know, organized could. Could help as well, um. You know, related to the commercial site. And it should be basically not become a um. Public health nuisance, basically. Uh, an example uh found for uh. Commercial outdoor storage, um basically. Found, it was Archer Lodge, um, you know. Basically, any outdoor storage related to the business. Um. And is for a lawfully oper- operated business. Um. And is. In compliance with other laws, zoning laws, et cetera, um are allowed if there are necessary to the operation of the business, you know. There's. Value for having that on your property in relation to your business. It's not just some. Pile of junk thrown there uh per se. Um. Yep. Add prohibition for temporary conditions as follows, so. Give, you know, if, if there's a con- current construction project. Um. Have, have, you know, an exception for them to have outdoor storage. Go ahead.
Put a standard of like after. After the project, um. Like, uh, make the temporary conditions like within a certain amount of time from the project.
So. Usually a C O is.
Yeah.
So during, so during the con- active construction process, it would cease after that C O is issued. So basically after the C O's issued. No longer temporary conditions under active construction. Yep. General junk vehicle recommendations, uh. We recommend to add a definition and prohibition uh to the nuisance ordinance for nuisance vehicles and abandoned vehicles. Um. It. More the better, um. Allow one junk motor vehicle to be stored on a residential property under the following conditions. It's located in the rear yard. It's uh concealed from public view or abutting properties. Uh, by a portable screening device uh in good repair, no holes. Um, and it's not a nuisance vehicle. And it also makes recommendations to make a couple changes to the vehicle restoration permits. Um, right now, you're only allowed two maximum extensions for your vehicle restoration permit. Um. I think adding a, another six month extension. Uh, would be beneficial. Uh, same, and same goes for um. Having a quantity standard or two active vehicle restorations permits uh per property at a time.
My, I, my only comments on this, just quickly, is I, I think based on our earlier conversation, I would. Dispose of the bullet that it had to be located in the rear yard if it meets the screening. Um. Requirements or the screening description. And just, we don't need to get into the restoration permits. I know we've already talked about them a bit, but. My two cents on that is that I, I don't see a need to. I, I would make those evergreen so long as, you know, someone's making a good faith effort. To. To be restoring the vehicle. So, you know, to this example of, you know, it's for my child when, in ten years. So long as there, you know, I have a good faith plan, there, I don't think that we should make. That something that, you know, there's a, a finite, finite number of times a permit could be renewed.
This is a ma- this is collectively two years, though.
So, so not renewal extensions for the act of permit itself, so. Say some, for instance, uh. A property is in violation, they had two vehicles they want to restore that are junk vehicles. Uh. They get the permits, but they don't. They don't make progress on it. You don't get the extension unless you make progress, so that, that's where that would come into play. No, no.
The city of.
And the reason I added an additional. Um, six month extension was because I heard it from a, a resident, um, that they would like to have more time, so. Um, for commercial uses, allow open stores of up to five junk vehicles as long as they're not nuisance vehicles. Um. Be screened from adjacent properties and public right of ways. And must comply with uh. The graveyard, vehicle graveyard site standards if storing five or more uh junk vehicles. Openly, which is defined. In our zoning ordinance. Uh. Vehicle graveyards, um. As a, as a. Um, said you have over five vehicles. You're considered. Uh, operating, uh, uh. Um, a many, uh, sorry, junk vehicle graveyard. As an accessory use, and that's per the definition in the zoning ordinance, so. Just putting that in the nuisance ordinance to say if you are. Having this as an accessory use, that you must abide by these screening standards if you're gonna have. More than five vehicles. Five or more.
I have one question.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Uh. A bona fide. Automobile repair shop. We say in five vehicles. The way things have been for the last couple of years. And just because you can't get a part. It may have to, you may. You know, a big, big, big auto repair shop. Could easily accumulate five vehicles waiting on parts.
So I'll, I'll say this, oh, sorry.
They, wouldn't they not necessarily need?
They wouldn't be, that's what I guess I'm saying, is, is it a fine line, it's what's, class, not, if he's. Prove he's waiting on parts, it's not a junk vehicle.
So. Per the definition in the zoning ordinance, um, outside of the nuisance ordinance, if five or more. Junk vehicles are on a property. It's considered a uh junk vehicle graveyard as an accessory use.
In this case, they wouldn't be junk vehicles.
But they would be, he's waiting on parts.
But, but this, they're just there temporarily?
Well, it would be, yes. Uh. If I took my car down and, uh. Say I need a transmission. And they have been in short supply.
Mm-hmm.
And. It just extends out to six months or longer. It, that's not considered a junk vehicle. It wouldn't be in mine. To me, anyway.
Yeah, well, it's part of the operation of the business, so I don't think it would fall under that. I agree. It wouldn't be a junk vehicle.
Okay, um.
If they're a bona fide auto shop, we're not, we're not talking about.
Right, right.
Bonafide.
It's an auto repair shop.
No, auto repair shop.
Yeah, well.
I mean, that's the business. Not an auxiliary or, you know.
Yeah, if it's relate, if they're related to the business and don't cause a. A nuisance, a public health hazard, say they're, you know. Your typical, I, uh, like. Dismantled and wrecked vehicle, you know, stuff you would see in a junk vehicle graveyard, right? So if it's related to the business. And. You know, it's not dismantled, wrecked, a nuisance. Then it's, it'd be, it'd be fine. All right. For, we'll, let's just scratch this, never mind. Bye. And thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, good.
Thank you.
I know that's a lot to digest and discuss, um, but we really appreciate it because. Again. We can prepare draft regulations based on best practices we've seen in other communities, but that doesn't mean it's right for Mills River. And that's where we turn to this board for your input, so. Again. Understand it can be painstaking, but thank you for that.
Well, once one's created and that's the foundation, then it makes it easy to. Adjust as necessary as.
Correct.
This is adjusted freely in the future.
Yes, we are doing the hard work now so that future adjustments can be.
So you're saying, once it's done for the first time, it's never gonna be changed, it's perfect, right?
Yeah.
Of course not, yeah, but it, but then you have a foundational problem, which is good, so.
Correct.
Okay, well. Um, our next. I'm moving on to. The new business. Uh, we were going to review the hazard prevention. Ordinance. It's recently adopted.
Yeah, I did, um. A kind of a quick synopsis of this, um, because while the ordinance has a lot of language in it. The, the prohibitions and what's allowed in uh. Hazard areas. Um, is pretty straightforward. Um. Just give you a little background, so again. Uh, pl- planning board requested this just as a review since y'all saw, uh, saw the preliminary version. Um, and did a recommendation for that. Town council had the public hearing on October second, and at that hearing, there was feedback. Uh, from council to develop multiple versions for consideration. And so they considered those options on October sixth. And basically chose from three different versions of the ordinance, uh, and chose the one that was adopted. So again, we've been through this before. The hazard areas are the floodway and the hundred year floodplain. Um, we do not meet FEMA NFIP minimum ordinance requirements, therefore federally backed flood insurance is not, still not available in the town of Mills River because we do not participate in the NFIP. We talked about the statutory authority that this is not a land use regulation. This does not trigger or run afoul of down zoning. Specifically, you can see here, I highlighted, um, that the statute for floodplain management says any local government can, responsible local government can have land use controls, but also other regulations in the interest of floodplain management. So again, that's what we put into place uh with the hazard prevention ordinance. So what's allowed in these areas? Um, it's limited to, I believe, six type, development types. So you're allowed in a hazard uh area to have residential accessory structures with no dwellings, utility or temperature control. So again, you're, you're plain old shed, outbuilding. Bonafide farm and agricultural land uses, land maintenance, land maintenance activities and structures outside of the floodway. Again, floodway being the most dangerous because it regularly floods. A water dependent facility is called a functionally dependent facility, um, in uh flood language. Uh, a governmental or public utility use is allowed. A stream restoration, floodplain restoration, et cetera, that's beneficial uh to the environment, functioning of those areas is allowed. And then a private residential road that goes through a hazard area floodplain floodway, but to access a dwelling outside of it. So those are the only types of development that are allowed in uh flood hazard areas. Everything else is prohibited, so any non-residential development, commercial, industrial, et cetera. Single family residential, multifamily residential, everything else is strictly prohibited. What about fill? So fill is prohibited outright, again, unless it's associated with those six approved or allowed development types. And then the standard is you can fill. Only five percent of the hazard area up to the base flood elevation, which again is the. What the experts have studied is the regular elevation or height of the normal hundred year flood. If you do any type of fill activity, you have to have a non-conversion agreement, basically a legal agreement recorded with the register of deeds that the town would review. Basically stating that uh the fill allowances for that property have been reached and protecting. Any future owner or notifying any future owner or subdivided lots that additional filling would not be permitted. Fill variances are allowed because, um, you know, there may be a situation where the town wants to put a walking trail uh at the back of our new park, or we need a new sewer pump station that may need more than five percent. And so that's where the Board of Adjustment, our quasi judicial board, would act as the variance authority or the hazard review board. Um, you'd have to prove that it is absolutely necessary to have that fill. You would also have to have a no rise certification prepared by an engineer, those very expensive studies to make sure there's no increase in the rise of floodwaters that could impact downstream properties. Um, and then the absolute maximum fill variance is up to fifteen percent of the hazard area. Again, floodplain and floodway, you can go two feet above base flood elevation, so basically you can. With a variance, you can deviate from the five percent minimum to fifteen percent max filling of those areas. And you can deviate from the base flood elevation fill height to two feet above that. Um, this covers agriculture and bona fide farms. There's also a one pager we developed uh for those folks that was included in your packet that goes into a lot more detail. Um, and kind of lays that out for agricultural members, uh, so they can understand this ordinance. So again, agricultural structures located outside the floodway are allowed. Don't need a permit, no review by staff.
In the hundred.
Correct, outside of the floodway, the most dangerous area. Placement of fill or the elevation of a tagged structure with fill, while a permit wouldn't be required if it was outside of the floodway, still has to abide by the fill limitations of the ordinance. So I can't put in a two hundred by three hundred foot pole barn and just uh put five feet of fill for it. That would have to comply with the fill limitations of the ordinance. And then we tried to be very hands off with ag land maintenance activities, so as long as there's not a significant change in the elevation or topography of the land. That is allowed without permits, including repaired blown out stream banks. Um. Any new tank with petroleum, chemicals, et cetera, that would be in a hazard area. A permit would be needed because that was uh something a majority of council uh voted for this in the ordinance is that. You know, a, a tank with those products in it, in a hazard area, obviously could pose a hazard in a flood event. So you would either have to, as agriculture, having a, a tank in one of these hazard areas, you would either have to elevate it, flood proof it. Or anchor it or combination thereof to, again, prevent that hazard in a flood event. Wow, I breeze through that, um.
Appreciate it, thank you. Talk for five more minutes.
No, I, I was gonna say, but just because of that, I'm happy to take questions, um. What else do they include? Yeah, the adopted ordinance is in there. It, it actually was just uploaded to our American legal code site, so it's also accessible to the public now. Um, through our code site, and then the one page was included as well.
So this. This is not up for.
That is, like, uh, you can only do it for, I don't know, three acres of. Uh. Three months. Is there a, uh, distance requirement on that?
No, it's just the acreage of the flood hazard area. So if I have a property with five acres and one acre of it. Is a hazard area with floodplains and floodway, I can fill five percent of that one acre.
And there's no restriction in case five acres was in, in floodplain, that I would, I could continue that five percent all through that five acres.
If you acquired additional land, you're saying? If you acquired additional land, you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah, now again, with any fill activity, there's that non-conversion agreement. So basically the, the, what we wanted to protect from is that is someone adding additional land or even subdividing land and then doing another fill application exceeding the ordinance standards. So, uh, because that original property would have that legal agreement tied to it in the register of deeds, it would basically put the owner and the town on notice, so we would pay more attention to that. But yes, we would basically work with that property owner that if it was the base 5% and if they had additional land area, we would basically recalculate that. So it's just still 5% for the total flood hazard area. Mr. Foster, do you have a question?
This is the one that's fast.
That's correct.
We just discussed it.
Yeah, the planning board wanted just an overview of what was included because there's been so much back and forth discussion. This is it.
I got, I, I've got like a rule of, rule of construction. Minutia. Um, and that is in reference to, C, where am I? Section C to C. Excuse me, where it talks about amount of fill. And I know it's implied, it's very, you just, you just went through that very clearly. A property owner may fill up to 5% of special flood hazard area if they allow development types. But, one thing I've found, if, if, if there's a way around something, somebody will try to find it. Would it might be a little bit, or I know it's already been adopted, but like, a property owner may fill up to 5% of the S F J, S A, S H A on parcel of re, of, of record owner, uh, under his record of ownership. You know, some, something that doesn't imply that you can fill 5% of the whole special hazard area. Does it, does that?
Well, that's what's allowed, is that if.
No, I'm talking about like, this is my part, this is, this is my parcel from here, this is the, is a special flood hazard area.
Oh, yes.
So it kinda, I mean, you could, you know, it kind of reads like you can fill 5% of the special, special hazard area.
Only within the bounds of your.
But it's, yeah, but it really, it says a property owner may fill, it, it, I'm just thinking it might tighten up a little bit or say.
Understood.
On a parcel of, of, or a lot of record owned by the property, whatever. But that's just, that's, so man, that's, that's something for attorneys to fight over.
Well, no, I mean, that's helpful because again, uh, the intent is this will be rolled into the U D O.
Right.
So I mean, that's the type of input we're looking when that's rolled into there.
It just, just get a little bit more specific so it doesn't, so somebody can't come back and go, you said I could fill 5% of the, you know, which, you know, they'd never probably play with that, but, you know, it, it is what it says, what it says.
Yeah, I think the first thing.
Rules of construction.
Of course. I think the first thing we would ask in that situation is do you have property owner permission? And if they didn't, that'd be it.
Right, well, yeah.
A point well taken.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we move on to the U D O then, and any updates or discussion about that?
I'm fine as long as everyone else is.
Yeah, okay, well, I did not.
Yeah, so.
When are we getting our next module?
Oh, yeah. So, uh, basically the planning board asked for this to be a standing item. So the main thing I wanted to review tonight are these remote meeting dates, and then obviously, uh, the drafting schedules in your packet. So like the first, uh, you'll see actually, if you, and I, I understand this is printed small and probably needs to be blown up on a screen, but, um, if you go into the actual schedule itself, um, the draft module one, I believe, will first be reviewed by the steering committee in December. Yeah, so come, come the December in-person visit by the consultants, staff will have completed our review of module one. During the consultant visit, we may only get through like two chapters, but the idea is that we follow that visit with these remote meetings and then review those additional chapters. But, uh, uh, I just had an update called the consultants today. Staff will have all of module one, which is chapters one, three, four, five, and seven by Thanksgiving, and we're expecting to have chapter three, the zoning regulations, next week. So there is movement on this. Um, the, the main item I really wanted to touch on tonight is that, as we've talked about with the consultant, uh, you know, with the expedited timeline, do the down zoning hold up with the state? Um, there's a need to schedule these remote steering committee meetings to review these draft work products. And so, um, it's in the staff report, but it's also at the very bottom of the schedule. They threw out some dates, um, and again, these are meant to be just placeholders. I think I called out one of them's like the day after Christmas. We're obviously not going to do that, the day after Christmas, but we basically need to get out, and I can do this in an email too, but, but we basically need to get out of our calendars and figure out when we are available around these days, because it's about every two to three weeks when we'll have a steering committee meeting, uh, starting late December, going through late March. And then the idea is, once those reviews are done, in April, the planning board's going to start considering, uh, the actual final draft product.
Well.
Email, so coordinate schedules via email.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, well, actually, I'm gonna put the onus on y'all. The dates are all here. So if you will individually email me, or we could just talk, um, if you'll individually get with me and tell me when you are available, you know, plus or minus two days around these dates, that will be helpful because I need to compile all that to the consultant, make sure they're available, and then I still need to check with the other four, uh, five members of our, excuse me, four members of our steering committee, since Mr. Burton also serves on the Board of Adjustments. I would be looking for that information from you all as well. Well, or your preference on when we want these remote meetings to be, because again, these are remote. You don't even have to be here. You could be at home, uh, having finished dinner, just know that we're going to be reviewing draft code together on the computer, but you know, they're, my intent is that staff will be here and anyone who wants to be in this room and have the setup can be here for those remote meetings. But by all means, if it's easier schedule wise, time wise, um, these are remote and you are welcome to take these meetings.
Can we get a deadline and get that information to you? Because the sooner I know those dates, the sooner I'll build everything else around it, because I'm not going to miss these.
Say, say your question again?
Yeah, can we, can you give us a deadline to get you?
Yes, I will probably ask for it by the end of the week.
I thought I had a copy of that, but I don't.
It's on, it's in your email.
Send.
Yeah.
The schedule.
The schedule.
It's on the.
I can't read it for me. Oh, it's on the back.
It's just.
Well, I'm.
Black and white.
Yeah.
Have to find it. Maybe it is here.
Good luck with that.
Any other, are we good to wrap up on the U D O discussion?
The only other thing I'll plug is our, our big, you know, please spread the word in the community, um, because we need people engaged, especially as we start drafting and the timeline starts getting hurried up. Um, the one item I just wanted to plug, which again, please get the word out in the community, is our big public forum. Um, we've scheduled for Wednesday, December 10th. I can't remember if it starts at 6:30 or 6, but it's basically 6 to 8:30 at the Mills River Elementary School gym. So think of like what we did for rural residential. We want to do something like that for the U D O project, the new zoning map, the new regulations. That just reminded me of one.
We're gonna have a public comments and all of that during that time period of just.
No, this will be an information, I mean, we will, we will be accepting public input, but it's not a council meeting. This will basically be staff and the consultant doing a presentation for about 30 minutes at the beginning, like we've done with the other public forums. And then we'll have stations and we'll have, you know, multiple folks there to basically have questions, take feedback, look at a zoning map with someone to see what their property might be zoned, and then they might have a problem with that. Maybe they don't want it to be zoned rural residential, and that's what I was going to get into next is, in terms of public input from our property owners in Mills River on the zoning district, uh, assigned to their property, you know, we are going to listen to that, but we need that sooner rather than later. So if we can engage with as many people as possible in this part of the process, show them the preliminary zoning map, get input from them that maybe that won't work for what they use it for, um, we'll take that into consideration. After the U D O is adopted, we've also, this isn't firm, but we've talked to the consultants about having one or two bulk rezoning requests for residents with no fee, basically considered by council. So if, if the zoning map is adopted and you never heard of Imagine Mills River over the last year and a half, but all of a sudden you want to build, I don't know, a repair shop, and it's not allowed anymore because you're agricultural residential. Well, if you find out, you know, again, this is to be firmed up, but, uh, you know, four months after the update, well, I can inform them, hey, well, we've got this bulk list of people going that want to change to a different district. We know we're not going to get it all right, and we'll basically, uh, tally that and then bring it through the rezoning process with no penalty or fee to those individuals.
What does bulk mean?
Bulk means, uh, we may have 10 people and 10 properties say my, I don't want the zoning that was assigned to me.
You're talking about, and they could be dispersed throughout the town of Mills River?
Now that, again, not saying all of them will get approved, not saying that, you know, staff still has to look at the comprehensive plan. So not saying that staff will recommend for all of those to change, but I just want to put out, we're providing opportunities for the public to say, I don't like the zoning that was assigned to my property and off, uh, opportunities for consideration for those change.
So clarify, they're always allowed to do that in the future. It just costs them money.
Correct, yes, any, yeah.
Always allowed to ask.
Yes, the idea is to have a period, you know, without costing those property owners something because they may have missed.
They don't get to send it back and say, no, I want it industrial, and we give them industrial instead of residential. It's, it's, it's an application or a request for rezoning. They're not being charged.
Yeah, I mean, and I know it's a work in progress, but i- is there a limit on the number of people who can file for that? I mean, so if.
Just be a large scale rezoning.
But you could have a hundred people who all have, want to move from one to a different one. They don't all have to be the same request, right?
Correct.
They can do that right now, though. Just to clarify, this isn't something, the only change you're offering is to waive a fee for a set period following the implementation of the U D O.
Correct.
It's allowed yesterday, today, and it'll still be allowed tomorrow. It's the, the only thing he's changing is the application.
But the criteria to walk through the reasoning for the rezoning would be the same.
As it was yesterday.
Yeah, and, and as it will be well into the future.
The only difference is that down zoning will be in place, but if these property owners.
Voluntary is.
Well, that's the thing. If these property owners want to move to that zoning district, they will sign a consent agreement as part of the rezoning request.
I mean, what I, what I see here though is someone who owns property that doesn't like the, the, uh, you know, l- limited density, who wants to rezone to something that's more dense, so.
They're welcome to make that request, but if it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan, staff would recommend against that.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's what I, okay, that's, I get it now. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Well, that comes to the planning. Rezoning comes to the planning. So if they want to stick, I mean, the easiest one is just say industrial to middle of residence.
Yeah, okay, and that makes sense. I mean, if it's tied to that, that makes sense. If it's just wide open for everybody to choose what they want to do, what are we doing this?
No, no. And I say bulk rezoning because multiple parcels we would be configured, but I mean, those requests would be broken out. I mean, again, I'm getting way ahead of myself, but like in an Excel sheet, this parcel, this address wants to go from here to here, here's a little map, here's the comp plan, consistent or inconsistent. But I got into that. I heard that question and I just wanted to answer that with, yes, we're considering opportunities for the public to be able to have input in what the zoning is for their property now for the preliminary zoning map and after the fact, after it's adopted.
But what we don't want the general public to hear is that, oh, we get to choose our zone. I, I don't want them to hear that, so. But they may be, I, I want them to participate in these is what I want, because I don't want that excuse a year from now.
Well, and that's why we want people to come out to the public forum December 10th, because if they can point to a map, or if we can walk them through it and they can say, uh, I don't like this.
Yeah.
But we can have that discussion. That's where we can take the notes.
Sorry, my participating in these was December 10th. That's what I was pointing at.
Yeah.
I want them to participate. I don't want them.
I guess the only issue there is that the comprehensive map has one big green splotch that says rural residential or whatever it says. I don't remember if the name changed. Where we have at the moment, four different residential zones that are, that are, that are proposed, which may all have variances. So I don't know how you're going to tie that to the comprehensive map. I mean, it still has to be residential, obviously, but what's going to keep somebody from saying, I just don't like that density that you have? Because it's different than a mile down the road, so.
That'd be a, a decision, well, for the planning board to make a recommendation on that matter, for town council to make a decision. If town council doesn't like that someone's requesting zoning with more density than what's in the adopted map, that's their, that's their.
And I guess, and I know it's late, um, but I'm running out of cookies anyway, so what the heck, um, but, um, you know, after midnight, it's like a whole meal, but, um, but the, but that, that's where, that's where, again, when the comprehensive map has one residential zone and we've broken that out into four, I mean, you're just going to open things up to.
We may not. We're still working on.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, so, so part of solving that issue would be.
Reducing.
Not to have four different residential.
I, I get, right? We don't want to leave ourselves exposed.
I'm sure the consultant will share that, but you know, there's a reason, and it may have to do with non, uh, non-conformity. I don't know, but.
Well, there'll be no non-conformity.
No, there, there will be a large non-conformity section just written to deal with the state down zone.
Okay.
But, um, generally, my response would be, you know, the comp plan goals are about protecting rural character, and we've heard about low density. We want low density residential. So if it were a choice between the three, three districts, there would be more discretion there. But I'm more concerned about someone wants industrial or general commercial in an area where there's only rural residential and there's no fit.
And, and that's, that's how our statement of consistency would read, that that's what this area, you know, it, uh, in, industrial would be completely bad fit here.
Um, and my concern is, is, you know, uh, an example of, of from a previous public meeting where somebody stood up and said, you're costing me hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it probably had to do with density and, and usage. And so, you know, and if you have multiple residential zones, it's, it's, that's something to really, there's a reason for that. And if I look at that map, a lot of those, um, I can't remember the name now, but not the mixed, not the mixed residential, but the next one, uh, low density residential. A lot of those are around these neighborhoods that we see clustered.
Existing smaller, right.
Existing neighborhoods, so we just need to, we just need to think through that very clearly, because if, if you have that opportunity, I mean, if somebody a mile down the road has less density than I do, then I want, I may want to change to that. And how, if it's one, I'm sorry, if it's one big comprehensive map, how did you make the decision that this property was, was low density and this property was agricultural residential?
And that gets into the rezoning conventions we used with the consultants, which basically, you know, there were standards. I mean, we did literally go through every parcel individually to make sure it, it fit, but I mean, if it was, uh, less than an acre in size the lot and had a house on it, it usually went to L D R, low density residential. If it was bigger than that, had a house on it, it was rural. If it was bigger than that or undeveloped, it was A G R, agricultural residential. So the idea that someone would be re, uh, requesting, let's use the fallen property, low density residential for the fallen property, that would not be supported by us. Because it's not.
Right.
Matching up with the re-zoning conventions for this new zoning map, which is L D Rs being assigned to small lots with existing homes.
Yeah, that makes sense, and that answers that question.
You know, I know no one wants to, me to keep saying this out loud, but the more people that know about this before the U D O is implemented, the better, because they can all go put a permit in right now. What, by today, and there's nothing we can do about it. So that we're giving them, by the time we get there, what, two years of conversation? So anyone that complains after that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You got two years. You could have subdivided it, you could have put your permits in, you could have sold it.
Right, and, and again, I forgive me for dragging it on, I'm not going to anymore, but I mean, there, there's no mulligans here, right? So we gotta get this thing right, so, um, that's all. I'm done.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, note that I will be out on December 2nd, or whatever the date of our next meeting is. Yeah, so, um, just wanted to let you all know. Yeah, so just wanted to let you all know. There are any other items?
I'll make a motion for the adjournments.